Good evening. I will go ahead and call the order. This meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council for May 20, 2025. We'll begin with Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Mayor Potem Taylor?
Here.
And Mayor Newman?
Here. At this time, I ask if you're able to please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For item six of our agenda announcements, I do have an order change to announce. Item 12A on 2025 Crossing Guard Program update will be moved up and heard after the public hearing, item 10A. And at this time, we'll begin our special presentations for the evening, and I'll be doing that from over at the podium. So to begin, I'd like to call Dusty Russell, Economic Development Analyst, to the lectern for a special presentation on our Business Recognition Program and to introduce our award recipient. Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The city's Business Recognition Program is designed to highlight exceptional businesses for special achievements or other unique contributions made to enhancing our economic prosperity, sustainability, resilience, or other activities fostering community enrichment in Thousand Oaks. Tonight, we're here to recognize our newest program award recipient. This year, Jacob Flame's Tongsu Do University celebrates a remarkable milestone: 20 years of business here in Thousand Oaks. Their business growth and resilience over these two decades is an achievement in itself, but this institution is more than a business. It's a vibrant community where students of all age come to refine their character as well as their martial arts skills. They develop leadership skills and are taught the value of civic engagement. Owners Jacob and Kinsey Flame lead by example and are often found volunteering across our city. Their actions reflect a deep sense of commitment to our community, and we are a stronger community for it. Mayor Newman, at this time, I'd like to invite you to say a few words and to present this award on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. And can we have Jacob, Kinsey? And some academy youth come join us, please. So first off, congratulations on 20 years. That's really something. It's not just 20 years of business success. You've built a community here for 20 years. You've made young people more active, more engaged. You've made young people stronger and more closely bonded together. And that's a great benefit for all of us in the community. So on behalf of the City Council, it's my honor to present to you this certificate of recognition and wish you many more years of success. We're very grateful for all you do. I hope you'll join us now for a photo with the rest of the City Council. Come on up. Oh, and if you'd like to make a few remarks, sure, please do.
If you give me a microphone at City Council, of course I do. You'll hear me two more times tonight. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of Thousand Oaks community. On behalf of the Tongsu Do University, we are incredibly honored and grateful to receive the recognition. This marks our 20th year serving the Thousand Oaks community, a milestone that means more than we can put into words. We started our school in 2005 as two college kids who were dating and had a dream. Today, we stand before you as a married couple, business owners, parents, and proud members of our community that has truly become our extended family. We brought our youth leadership team here tonight. Tonight was supposed to be their final, but we decided instead of a final test, they should get to come here and receive this award for us. These young leaders are not just students. They're role models, helpers, and the future of our community. Their presence reminds us that our work is so much bigger than teaching just self-defense. We're shaping character, building confidence, and creating connection. We especially want to thank our amazing customers, our students, and families, many of whom have been with us for years. Without your support, your belief in us, and your willingness to grow with us, we wouldn't be here without you. I also have to give a special recognition to the man who is truly the heart of our studio, Master Flame, as many of you know him. I call him that at work, too. You won't often find him with a microphone or a public comment, but every day, he inspires our students to do their best. His quiet strength and wavering dedication and positive motivation make an impact that words can hardly capture. He leads with humility and a heart, and we are better because of it. We are proud to say that even though there were incredibly difficult times during COVID, when nearly 80% of martial arts studios closed across the United States, we kept our doors open, we adapted, we pushed forward, and we never gave up. The resilience is a reflection of this community and the spirit of Tongsu Do. Thank you for honoring our journey. We are deeply proud to be a part of this fabric of Thousand Oaks, and we look forward to continuing to serve the city for many years.
Thank you again, City Council and families of our students and everybody here. We appreciate everybody and appreciate the award. Thank you so much. I personally got up here really to do the work of thanking Kinsey because she always gets up and she always does the talking, and she is the heart and the soul of our studio. And so it is fitting that we recognize her just as much as the words that come back towards me because she does far, far more than I. So I thank you, Kinsey, and I appreciate all of your support and love. I know it means a lot to you to hear that in front of all of these great esteemed people. So thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you, Kinsey. Everybody enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Thank you, Kinsey. And especially thank you to all the students in the university. I know, you know, you had a choice tonight between taking a test or coming and getting an award. I think you made the right choice. I think I'd make the same choice. We're so honored to give you this award, and again, we wish you many more years of success. And now, now I will ask you, please join us and come take a picture with me and my colleagues. Come on up. Tonight, we have a double event. I would now like to welcome the following Community Development Department staff: Community Development Director Kelvin Parker, Planning Manager Kristen Rice, and Building Official Teo Franklin. Welcome all. This month, we celebrate a significant achievement. Earlier in May, the city was honored with the Comprehensive Plan Award by the American Planning Association. This award is a testament to the hard work, dedication, and collaboration of many, from our city planners and officials to community leaders and engaged residents. Additionally, we have the honor of proclaiming May as Building and Safety Month. Building safety is a fundamental priority for every city, and I deeply appreciate our dedicated staff who work tirelessly to uphold it as a top concern for our community. To commemorate these achievements, I would first like to present you with this proclamation in honor of Building Safety Month and then invite my fellow council members down for a photograph with each group. But first, please accept this proclamation on behalf of the City Council. Congratulations. Would any of you like to say a few words on behalf of either group we're honoring tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's truly a pleasure and honor to serve the community in this capacity. I'm so excited that we have the opportunity to present award-winning work, and it's just a testament of the vision of the City Council and us having the opportunity and the support to bring that vision to fruition. And as always, we're lucky to have a building official like Teo, who puts the community first and takes safety seriously to ensure that we serve our duty and keep our patrons safe.
Thank you. Your hard work is a test shows why we have such well-thought-out planning processes and such efficient building processes here in the city. We're happy that the American Planning Association has honored us in this way, and we're very grateful for the very deep bench we have within CDD. That's a tribute to you all, so thank you for that. I think we're going to take two sets of pictures. One honoring the APA Award and then a second one in honor of Building Month. So let's bring each group up with my colleagues, please. And this is the time of the hearing for public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is the time and place for public comments. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three individuals have requested to speak and pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. So for public comments, it appears we have three comments tonight. Two are in person and one is remote. We'll begin in person with Mr. Mike Hauser, followed by Janice Wise. Mr. Hauser, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Mike Hauser, resident of the city of Camarillo. I come before you tonight representing the world-class New West Symphony, a resident company of the Bank of America Performing Arts Center. a resident company of the Bank of America Performing Arts Center, and also as one of the co-chairs for the symphony's summer fundraising dinner and concert, Summer Fest, which this year will be held on June 29th at 5:00 PM at the beautiful Rancho de Las Palmas Event Center. It's located just off the 23 freeway in Tierra Rojada. I would like to start my comments by thanking City Manager Drew Powers and the Director of Cultural Affairs Jonathan Serret and the council for your support of our inaugural Summer Fest, which was in 2023. Now in its third year, and as we celebrate the 30th anniversary of New West, we continue to raise funds for world-class concert performances here in Thousand Oaks and in Camarillo, as well as supporting arts outreach and education, music education for students. In keeping that it is our 30th anniversary, our theme this year is Pearls, and our concert this year is called Dancing Through the Decades. We will have an all-star lineup of incredibly talented singers and musicians who will be performing hits from the last 30 years. Everything from The Beatles to Frank Sinatra, Chicago, Ricky Martin, Amy Winehouse, Journey, and much more. The event includes a cocktail hour with a hosted bar, special event drinks with local artists displaying artworks. Dinner includes a top-quality buffet in an elegant setting. There will be a live auction before the concert, open to all attendees that feature Dodger tickets behind home plate. Vacation homestays, special dining and wine events, trips, and much more, with all of the proceeds going to support our programming and education outreach efforts. We will be paying special tribute to honorees that have supported New West Symphony for its first 30 years, and also to first responders of the devastating mountain fire. And because it's just before 4th of July, you can count on some patriotic music as well as part of the program. This is one of the symphony's most important fundraising efforts annually. Tickets for the dinner and the concert, or just the concert itself, are extremely limited and go quickly. A portion of the dinner ticket cost is tax-deductible, which is always a plus. For more information about Summer Fest 2025 or to purchase tickets, the information can be found on the New West Symphony website, and that's newwestsymphony.org/summerfest. There you'll find complete information about the event, as well as information about being an event sponsor or donor. Again, we thank the council and the city for its continued support for operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. We go next to Ms. Janice Wise, and then we'll hear from Jessica Buckley remotely. Ms. Wise, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Janice Wise. I live in Newbury Park. I'm the Director of Community Relations at Art Trek. We're also reside in Newbury Park. And I'm here tonight to give a couple of comments. I wanted to say thank you, thank you, and you're invited. So our first thank you is for funding our grant proposal for Five Dollar Friday. That's our community art night that we do monthly at Art Trek, where we open up our studio for all the people in the community to come and do all the art they want from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. We've been doing that for 13 years. We took a little break for COVID, but we were back at it. So we've done it 108 times, and we're going to do it 1,000 more in our new studio at 1144 Tormeline, also in Newbury Park. So that goes to our second thank you, which is to thank the city planning team and everybody on the council, everybody who's helped us get through the process of building out our new facility. It has been quite the journey, but we're on target to actually move and get out of the place we're in now into the place we are moving to on time. Hallelujah. So we are going to have a ribbon cutting, and that's the "you're invited" part. We're having a ribbon cutting on June 26th at 5:00 PM. We will have a formal invitation to follow, but just wanted to get you to save the date for that because that's going to be a really big event. We want the entire community to come out and celebrate with us. This is a great new chapter. As we are moving into planning and elevating the arts in the community with the strategic plan that's happening, we want Art Trek to be considered a resource, a hub for creative expression, and a place for the community to rely on and gather. So we hope that you will come out, you'll come and see our new place, and you'll get artsy with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Thank you both. Both are in-person speakers. We're always happy to hear about arts and cultural programming in our community. We now go to our final public comment speaker, who is with us remotely, and that's Ms. Jessica Buckley. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Just fine, thanks.
Perfect. I have no comment. So I was registering to attend, and I have missed marked that. So you could put it on record that I have no comment this evening. Thank you.
We appreciate your checking in. Thank you. Very good. We now move to our consent calendar. Are there any items to pull from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Any discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll ask that you please prepare us for a vote.
That motion passes 5-0.
Very good. We have one public hearing item tonight, and I'll turn that, to open that, to Madam Clerk.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item Number 10A, Assembly Bill 2561, vacant position status. There are no speakers for this item at this time.
Thank you. And presenting on this item is the city's Human Resources Director, Jeanette Green. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Newman and council members. This presentation fulfills new reporting requirements under Assembly Bill 2561, which took effect late last year. The law requires public agencies to annually report on job vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts to support adequate staffing and maintain strong labor relations. This report covers fiscal year FY 2024 to '25. AB 2561 also allows recognized employee organizations to speak at this hearing. The Department of Human Resources notified all three of the city's employee associations of their right to present this evening. The law requires additional reporting if job vacancies exceed 20% in any bargaining unit. Currently, none of the city's units meet the 20% threshold. This slide provides an overview of the city's vacancy rate by bargaining unit. The city has 397 total positions with an overall vacancy rate of 7.05%. Table 1 breaks down a, this vacancy rate by unit. As you can see, Tocia has 221 positions, 12 vacancies, and a vacancy rate of 5.43%. Toma has 93 positions, nine vacancies, and a vacancy rate of 9.68%. And SMA has 72 positions, six vacancies, and a vacancy rate of 8.33%. To attract qualified candidates, the city uses a range of recruitment strategies, including job boards, social media, job fairs, and other opportunities to outreach to the public. And very importantly, we offer competitive compensation. Our retention efforts focus on fostering employee engagement, connection, and professional development. Thanks to these efforts, the city continues to be a premier employer in Ventura County and the region at large, and remains committed to attracting and retaining top talent. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks very much, Ms. Green. Are there questions on this item? Councilmember Engler.
Yes, thank you. Just one quick question. And welcome to presenting to us. I know this is your, your inaugural address, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a, a small vacancy rate. I'm, I'm just curious, in, in the general population, sometimes there's difficulty in recruiting people. How are we doing on our recruiting and filling those vacancies on a time base? In other words, are we having trouble filling them, or is it just a normal, normal procedures?
As with any organization, I do think that there are a few hard-to-fill positions, particularly technical positions, positions that require a high level of education, might be a little bit more difficult. But our vacancy rates suggest that we're actually doing a very good job of getting those vacancies filled. And we also have a very positive turnover rate, which shows that we're also retaining talent as well.
Any other questions? Very good. Well, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain any discussion or a motion on this item. Councilmember Engler.
I would, I would move to receive the, the, the item.
Any discussion?
If I may, Mayor, just to put the record. Thank you. There are two components to the recommendation is to receive the report, and also to find that the action is not a project as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act. So I believe, Councilmember Engler, your motion is for...
Perhaps I could, I could rephrase the motion as to accept staff recommendation.
Thank you.
And, and to note that it is CEQA exempt. Any, any discussion on the motion, the amendments to the motion? Let's vote, please.
That motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We now go to our amended agenda order. Item 12A, the 2025 Crossing Guard Program update. Presenting on this item this evening is Public Works Director Nader Hadari, Deputy City Manager Akbar Alakhan, and available for questions, Director of Strategic Communication and Public Affairs Alexandra South, Emergency Services Manager Graham Watts, and Senior Civil Engineer Jim Mashika. Mr. Hadari, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nader Hadari, and alongside me tonight, as you mentioned, is Deputy City Manager Akbar Alakhan. The item before you is a department report on pedestrian and vehicle counts at all-staffed school crossing guard locations citywide. The council's adopted crossing guard policy, as written, does not require council action. However, we wanted to bring the item before you tonight to provide you with an update and for some discussion in the spirit of potential collaboration with the school district if a more localized and customized level of service is desired. Some brief background, the City Council approved the first crossing guard in 1964, shortly after the city's incorporation has been managing and funding the project ever since. The state has established minimum crossing guard standards that are used at most school districts and cities that need to be met for considering crossing guard placement. Since 1999, a set of city-wide adopted standards modeled after the state guidelines, but with more, far more generous and easier qualifying thresholds, has guided the city in crossing guard placement. The program has been adaptable over the years with locations either added or removed throughout the history of the program based on the actual needs of the public and changes in transportation patterns. Meeting minimum standards does not in and of itself require the placement of a crossing guard, but rather qualifies a location for consideration. Here's the overview of the 24 existing crossing guard intersections citywide at 20 different CVUSD elementary school and middle school campuses. In 2022, the City Council directed staff to work with the Traffic Commission to update the city's crossing guard program policies and standards, otherwise known as the policy. Based on the Traffic Commission's detailed input and feedback, as well as considerable public feedback from the public as well as the council, this comprehensive process concluded with the City Council's approval and adoption of the new 2023 city crossing guard policy in February 2023. This new policy, which took effect during the 2023-2024 school year, features clear and objective standards for crossing guard placement, which are more generous than the statewide standards that are used by most other public agencies and school districts. This is primarily done via relaxed minimum thresholds of the number of vehicles and pedestrians that are needed to qualify an intersection, in many cases which are half of what the state normally requires. Objective standards, such as the one in the 2023 policy, exist to ensure our resources are deployed appropriately and that decisions are applied fairly and without bias. Thousand Oaks has by far the largest number of crosswalk, crossing guard locations across the county, even more than Simi Valley or Oxnard, who are larger in population than Thousand Oaks. The only other comparable city in the county is Ventura, where the city funds five intersections that meet the state standards, and the Ventura Unified School District covers, and is responsible for any additional desired locations that are beyond the state standards. I'd like to note that many school districts throughout Southern California and Ventura County are actively engaged in either oversight or involvement of their local crossing guard programs. The vast majority of agencies use the state standards. However, the city of Thousand Oaks is the only municipal agency in Ventura County that has their own more generous local standards instead of relying on the statewide crossing guard standards. I also just want to briefly touch on and highlight the significant efforts and investments that the city has made and continues to make to improve walkability and pedestrian safety citywide. Since 2010, the city has spent over $25 million to make our streets safer for all modes of transportation under focused investments that have made our streets, sidewalks, and bike lanes more accessible, more plentiful, and easier to use, including near-school areas. Some examples include new bike lanes on Erbs Road, Willow Lane, Moore Park Road, Reno Road, and others. We've repurposed busy arterial streets such as Avenue de las Arboles, Hillcrest Drive, and Reno Road to reduce the number of travel lanes and add bicycle lanes and pedestrian safety amenities. We've enhanced pedestrian crossings in many locations. The city now has 36 enhanced pedestrian crossings citywide, including just 10 that were recently constructed last year. Sidewalks have been added to many roadways, such as Jan's Road, Los Feliz, Rancho Road, and others to improve walkability to schools. And we've also upgraded hundreds of curb ramps for improved ADA access. We've also been constructing bulbous to shorten pedestrian crossings by extending the sidewalk partially into the street. Examples of this are Willow Lane, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and previously near Redwood Middle School. We, we continue to revamp and develop comprehensive active transportation and local road safety plans to help us focus on where to make future bicyclines and pedestrian safety improvements. Lastly, the city is investing in modernizing roadway lighting, starting with planned upgrades on Avenue de las Arboles and Los Feliz. In addition to building and improving a physical infrastructure, the city has put extensive effort into creating education and awareness, promoting walking to school, as well as the crossing guard program and crossing counts over the past two years. The Comprehensive Walk to School TO.org website was built in 2023 and frequently updated since then with customizable materials that people can use to organize walking efforts, both digitally and in print. The website supported the various in-person outreach presentations, and material was distributed to the school district to give people and parents the tools they need to increase walking and biking to schools. These efforts had a very extensive digital reach, with over 12,000 impressions alone this year on social media. Further details and a summary of the outreach campaign is included in the staff report packet. I'd like to now provide a quick recap of the city's 2023 crossing guard policy and how it is administered in terms of qualifying locations. As I mentioned earlier, this new policy contains clear and objective criteria that is used to determine whether or not at each location is eligible for the placement of crossing guards. This new policy also contains a two-consecutive-year review process, which means that a location is not eliminated based on just one year's counts. This allows the crossing guard program to continue to be able to adapt to the needs of the public and expand or contract as needed to match transportation patterns. The process for conducting the annual counts is listed on this slide, and it starts with annual field counts of all locations performed by an independent professional engineering firm. The results of each count are then compared against the city's policy standards to determine if each location meets the minimum standards that's needed to qualify for a crossing guard. Staff then brings the report as an information item to the Traffic Commission as a venue to share the information and collect public input. Based on the final information, changes are implemented ahead of the following school year to either add locations that now meet the standards or to discontinue those who have not met the standards for two years in a row. This year's counts were completed and verified on May 6th, 2025. As noted earlier, these year's counts serve as year number two under the new policy. The counts reveal that 11 of the existing 24 locations do not meet the city's easier-to-meet standards, which is less than the 18 of the 24, which, which do not meet the statewide standards that most other agencies would use. 10 of these 11 locations have not met the requirements for at least two years in a row. This means there are 10 existing crossing guard locations that do not qualify for a crossing guard, seven of which have not met the requirements for now four years running. Here's the details on the results of the 2025 counts for each location. This is the list of the 13 existing... This is the list of the 13 existing locations that do have sufficient pedestrian and vehicle counts that satisfy the city's minimum standards for crossing guard placement. It should be noted that only six of these 13 locations would qualify for a crossing guard if the city was using the state standards, which almost every other agency uses. This means that there are seven additional locations on this slide that qualify due to the city's easier-to-meet requirements, which shows that the city policy is being effective in helping qualify more locations. And here is a breakdown of the 11 sites that, existing sites that do not meet the minimum criteria to qualify under the policy or any of the applicable alternatives that are contained in the policy. These results are similar to previous counts, including last year's. Again, seven of these locations have not met the minimum standards for four years in a row, and five of these locations did not qualify due to extremely low pedestrian counts with a single-digit number of pedestrians. All of these locations, other than Conejo Elementary, have not met the standards for two years in a row. So that, that the 10 of the 11 that have had at least two years running are all the ones depicted here, other than Conejo Elementary, which it was, this was just the first year in that campus. So to summarize the current status, the city's crossing guard policy is the most generous and accommodating of any city in the county. Despite extensive outreach and promoting walking to school, the results from this year's counts are similar to recent years. Many locations have simply have extremely low usage in terms of pedestrians. The city's new policy has been effective. It has helped qualify seven additional locations that would, otherwise would have in any other agency. This year's counts are the second year of the two-year rule, and therefore, the 10 locations that have had very low counts for two consecutive years would be scheduled to be discontinued ahead of the upcoming school year. Staff will keep promoting walking to school via a robust public outreach campaign, including the comprehensive Walk to School TO website that contains tools to enable residents to mobilize and walk, promote walking in their neighborhoods. We will also continue to make key infrastructure and engineering improvements to streets and intersections citywide and explore more opportunities to build enhanced pedestrian crossings, improve lighting, and add more sidewalks and bike lanes. Lastly, as I mentioned earlier, the, the program has expanded and contracted census inception inception, and locations will continue to be added or removed in the future based on the actual field counts to match the actual needs of the public and changes in transportation habits. The recommendations are in the staff report and listed on this slide. As noted at the beginning of the presentation, we're primarily here to provide an update and to gauge interest if alternative approaches to this program, to this program, if there is a desire for a heightened level of service beyond what our policy affords. Like many other PR agencies across the county, these alternatives could involve coordination with the school district. Therefore, if desired by the city council, staff can engage with the school district in a spirit of collaboration. Thank you, and staff is available for any questions.
Mister Hadari, thank you very much for your presentation. Other questions of staff? Mayor Paton Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. My first question, we've talked a lot about the policy, and we know that we have created a more lenient policy than the state, and we know that there's still schools that are not qualifying. And then you showed the graph, which I appreciate, of, of other cities and, and their involvement. Can you go over what some of the, what are some of the other cities doing as far as, like I saw Ventura, you used the example where there's a city and, and school approach. Are there other cities doing that? What are other cities doing to maybe create a solution for maybe the dynamic that we're in?
Yeah, I think, as we've been surveying the other agencies, you, we've noted that it, the options are across the spectrum. In some cases, the police department's managing the program. Other cases, we have the, the school district entirely managing the program. In some cases, there's some hybrid approach where there's, and what we've seen is in, in some of those, the city-only funds and sponsors, the, those that meet the typical state standards and any additional ones that the school district wants, the school district, you know, steps up and provides those. So it's, it's a variety of options.
So for the concern of safety for kids who are walking on a crosswalk that does not have a crossguard, and you mentioned all the upgrades. I don't know if that's the correct way to say it, but the upgrades that we have done to create crosswalks that are more safe. Is there a metric we use, or is there anything to see how much safer they are by the actions that the city has made? I don't even know if that's the right way to say it, but you know what I'm saying?
Well, there, there is published data that shows that the, those RRFBs, the Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons, can, you know, improve compliance with, with stopping, for car stopping at an intersection by up to 98%. You know, there, there's different studies out there, but that, that's definitely, that's certainly one of them that we've been deploying. Those are the ones we've been putting in and just installed 10 more of citywide recently. And I think four or five of these 10 locations that are not meeting the, the standards are, already have that similar type of device or have a traffic signal there. And as, as I mentioned earlier, we're always continually looking to leverage grant funding or leverage, you know, whatever available funding we have to continue to add these elements as we go. In some cases, you have a, you know, residential street low-speed cul-de-sac with a very short crossing and, you know, in, in that type of situation, there's really not, and with a straight shot and good visibility, there's really no applicability, you know, to put enhanced devices. But in other cases, it is much more suitable.
And then last question, you mentioned the outreach that we were doing to try to encourage more walkability. Did we see an increase at all through our efforts? And were there any schools that were in a position of not qualifying for the crossguard that then moved into a position of qualifying after our outreach?
Yeah, I can touch on that, and then if I miss anything, our communications director can add to that. Yes, there are a few locations this year. We had 11 locations that did not meet the requirements. That was down from last year, so there was about two or three other campuses that did get over the, the threshold this time around. Overall, by and large, the number of, all the data compiled together reveals that it's pretty flat. Those campuses had a little bit of an increase, but generally, all the numbers over the past two to three years, four years have been consistent. There is not an increase in walking to school despite the efforts. They are on those specific days, they are in the walk to school days, the special event days, but it appears that, that, you know, that is not a sustained level of involvement. You know, those are kind of special events, and then residents go back to their normal habits on, on occasion after the...
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to tack on a little bit to Councilmember Taylor's question about our public outreach, it seems to me it was fairly robust. I know as a council member, I went to a couple of walk to school events myself. One was in Westlake, one was in Thousand Oaks. Jeremy was there, we had a few deputies, there you go. David, you went to a couple, I think. So, you know, we all kind of pitched in to try to raise those numbers. And we had this two-year period to make this happen. But what I hear you saying, that despite those efforts, the, the count really stayed about flat. Is that right?
On an overall sense, there was a few campuses that did have, you know, some, some improvement, or they were close to the line, and now they're, you know, just over. But there has not been a measurable, significant increase in walking to school.
And there's, there's ones that you highlighted, very low usage. What is that? What kind of a count is very low usage?
Many have single digits counts, so you're talking four, five, two, six, you know, one, one pedestrian crossing the crosswalk.
Like in the morning, like in...
Yeah, in the entire morning shift or in the entire afternoon shift.
Okay, okay. And the fact that usage seems to be, in the long run, dropping and right now flat, I mean, what do you, what do you attribute this to? What trend is happening in our community where crossing guards in these crosswalks are being used less and less?
Yeah, I think there's, the school district may be able to answer that a little bit in more detail, but we do understand there is declining enrollment in the schools. We know that there's school choice, so many, many families are not sending their child to the school that's six blocks from their house, or instead driving them across town for a specialty purpose or to another campus for, because that campus offers something that their local school doesn't. So a few of those factors combined together, and maybe just habits, you know, people like their vehicles and have other things to do in the morning. And I think you put all those together, and there's just generally less, less of that walk, biking to school.
Yeah, I can see that. Trends that have developed over the years that maybe weren't there 20, 30 years ago, but, you know, the city evolves, so I could see where that would be the case. All right, that's it for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think I'm just asking clarifying questions as it relates to what staff is asking for, for the purpose of this going-forward conversation. The idea, and I'm, I'm calling this out because I've noticed in our current policy that we've only listed the school district once, and it was a one-time, kind of give us a list, and then we moved forward with the policy as a city. So in, in, in this ask, it is to be more collaborative with the, with, with our school district, who I think we can all agree are the experts of the school sites and understand more intimately their families, correct? Just to create a collaborative conversation.
Councilmember Gutierrez, that, that is correct. The, the goal of tonight's recommendation is to simply explore options with the school district.
Okay. And I'm trying really carefully not to get into long-winded question-asking, so I apologize. But in, outside of the policy procedurally, what opportunities has the city taken to work collaboratively with the school district under this current policy?
Yeah, thank you. There's been a variety of elements where our manager of the programs and direct communication with the school district, as well as many of the principals on an ongoing basis. We've attended a few of those DAC meetings that the school district has put on, and we've provided, you know, a lot of resources, information, printable packets, items for the school district to include in their newsletters that go to parents. I don't know how much of that has been deployed or distributed or implemented by the school district, but that, that, those are the, we've provided all the resources that we, we can to help advocate for the program.
Okay, great. And that actually answered a second question of mine, which is how are we, you know, getting the information out about our walking events and kind of the information around crossing guards by way of sharing information through the district, and how are they disseminating that information? So it sounds like it's getting done maybe, but we're at least providing the information?
Yes, and I'd like to, if I missed anything, Alex South, our communications director, can fill in the gaps.
Thank you, Nader. So we built a grassroots toolkit in 2023 under the direction of the council after the original policy was made to its current form. And so we worked closely with the school district, sharing those materials, both in English and in Spanish. And those materials were distributed through their district-wide newsletters. We had pretty regular social media campaigns, as well as some acorn ad placement early on, where budget allowed for that. And we continued to keep that dialogue open. I'm grateful to all the council members who participated in the Cross with a Councilmember program that we created as part of that. And so the intention was really to help build up all the tools for the individual sites to use and execute those programs, because they know their students and families best and what activities might work for them. And so we wanted to be that resource to help provide those materials to make it more accessible to encourage walking or biking to school.
Awesome. Thank you. And then I think I just have one last question about, not related so much to communication, but, so I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but more around when we receive the information back from the district on, there's, there's a declining enrollment, there's a school choice element, there's after-school programs, meaning our AM and PM may differ, how we... And I know this is the policy, so it's hard to like implement that feedback to the policy, but what happens with that information? I guess that's the question. What happens with that feedback? Is that what's prompting this ask now?
To some degree, there are a lot of local-level changes and, you know, special tailored things that each school has, or, you know, events that each school has, et cetera. And because of that reason, that could be an opportunity that, you know, would, you know, if the school district was more involved, or if, if they were overseeing the program, that might afford them the opportunity to customize the program a little bit better and decentralize it and allow each school to really meet their own needs, as opposed to a kind of a one-size-fits-all global program that, that the current program is only able to afford.
Wonderful. You actually reminded me of a really important question that I wanted to ask tonight to help us understand when we see ownership tied to, because the, the staff recommendation says, you know, on options for future program, program oversight, including possible transfer of the program to the district. So that program oversight, what does it allow the district to do should they take it on that they can't currently do now?
Well, the, it's the issue of the control and allowing redistribution of resources or allowing that more tailored, local-level, decentralized program to be administered by each campus to meet their needs. And that's, the district is, cannot do that right now, because we have a, a clear and objective, you know, a fact-based policy to be able to apply, which doesn't accommodate or cannot accommodate that level of granularity.
Okay, yeah, and I, I call that out too, because I saw in the policy, the AM, PM must be, you know, the same or similar, must meet all four requirements. And if either AM or PM count disqualifies the location from eligibility, then it shall not be approved, or I'm assuming this, like, of the schools that are not meeting the requirement, is it an AM disqualification or a PM disqualification? Because I, I am a parent, one of our school districts, my parent behavior is, I may let my son walk to school in the morning, but he attends a, an after-school program, and I do that intentionally, because I will be picking him up, and it's easier an hour later to pick him up. So I, I think the AM, PM is, is important, just, and just something I wanted more clarity around. Like, we are disqualifying sites based on one or the other, or are they, we're marking both? The way it reads, it means, it says one or the other.
Yeah, the majority of the sites that don't meet, don't meet in both the AM and the PM, but I think there are maybe two, two or three that met on one, but didn't meet on the other. Now, the policy includes alternatives that says if you miss one of the four, then you can still qualify if there's X amount of, you know, still activity, et cetera, so. And that, those alternatives help qualify a few more locations, three more locations that otherwise would have been. So that was a kind of already factored into the, the language of the policy to accommodate for that if a campus doesn't meet only one of the four.
And Councilmember Gutierrez, if I can add just one thing, you were asking just a minute ago about what benefits a decentralized approach, excuse me, might afford us. Really, what a policy does really well is create standardization across the board. What exploring other options with partnering with school jurisdictions may be able to do is afford us more flexibility about how that program is administered. How is it, how it is administered, be more responsive to the individual school needs, including different school schedules for special events. The, the challenge right now is that a policy makes it somewhat difficult to do that when we're applying it on a broad basis.
Understood. Okay, I think that's it for now. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I too was able to tag along for a couple of the walk to school days, and it was great to see the kids out there walking to school. It was just being around young folks like that, feeling the energy and everything is, is fun. So I appreciate the, the effort made there, and I, for one, enjoyed it, so. I got a question, though, on the counts. We had a, had a group go out and... We had a group go out and do the counts. I'm assuming it was on a nice, clear day like today, or did you have any variance because of weather? Was there a single count, was there more than one count?
Yes, this is consistent with the practice that we've been employing for many, many years. It's a single count, but if there are factors, we avoid inclement weather days, we largely avoid Mondays and Fridays, because there may be some, you know, long weekend activity taking place by some students, so we aim for Tuesdays through Thursdays. We've redone counts when there's a special event, or there's unusually low number, or there's, you know, the inclement weather rolls in, which wasn't expected. So we did that this year, we counted several locations at an additional expense to make sure we have the most accurate and representative data reflective of that school campus. Plus, we also have the previous year's counts to kind of compare them to. So if there's, you know, a big swing one way or the other, then that allows us to do initial analysis and make sure that, you know, that data is accurate.
So you tried to the greatest ability of yourself to catch just a standard school day?
Yeah, yeah, typical representative sample.
Now, we base a lot of our, you mentioned several times, that we have, our policy is much more generous than the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Can you go a little bit into what that is, and how it's used in other ways? Is it simply for this application, or how do we use it in different applications?
Yeah, it's only for this crossing guard purpose. I mean, we have other city practices that we do that are, you know, above and beyond, you know, the state minimum standards for other areas. But typically for traffic measures, we follow the state standards, and almost every other agency does. And we are unique, that, you know, we are the only municipal agency in the county that has decided to lower the bar to allow more crossing guard locations to qualify. And by and large, that's done by requiring only 20 pedestrians to be crossing to qualify, as opposed to 40, which is required by the state.
Okay, but this document, this guideline from the state handles everything from traffic light sizes to the lines in the streets, and those are the guidelines that we typically go by?
Correct.
In terms of the crossings themselves, and you touched on it just briefly, but I wanted you to go a little more into it, are there any mitigating factors that you look at, such as line of sight visibility, such as growth of vegetation in the area? Other things that may be a factor we're not looking at that might require a crossing guard?
Yeah, so a lot of that was also included in the 2023 policy. We included special alternatives that lower the bar required to qualify if the roadway is wider than 40 feet, if the roadway is 35 miles an hour or higher, or if there's a higher level of vehicular volume on the road, more than 1,000 vehicles per day. So those elements were factored in. And then the other pieces in terms of visibility and tree scape and site distance, those are routine items that we stay on top of with our street and landscape divisions to make sure that we keep the roads in a safe and passable manner.
And just one final quick question, if I could, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned the enhanced crossing, the flashing lights and things like that. Are we scheduled to provide more of those in the area, or how do we go about that?
Yes, the list of 10 locations that don't have the requisite counts right now to meet the standards, five of those 10 are, we're looking at upgrades to them, either upgrading some existing equipment that may be out there, or in one case, potentially adding a traffic signal. There's other, there happens to be projects in the works that would already be helping, potentially assisting those particular crosswalks. A few of the other crossings already have always stops, so there's really not a lot of additional measures required to be taken for them. And a few, two of the streets have existing speed humps that are helping to be a traffic calming device. One of the 10 locations is in the county, so there's no city improvements that are going to be made at that intersection.
Yeah, your statistic of 98% compliance rate for the flashers is pretty impressive, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. It was actually something that Councilmember Gutierrez mentioned, that brought up this idea. I know we're not creating the plan, all we're doing today is potentially having you engage in a conversation to see what this could look like. So I want to make sure I'm not getting ahead of myself, but if we did partner, could, or maybe would we, let me ask it this way, could we have a financial support to the district? And then maybe the other one is, would we? Maybe that's the decision we'd have to make, but could we?
Yes, most certainly. In fact, we see models throughout the county where there is participation from the city, even when it's administered outside of the city.
Okay, so that could be a potential option on the table?
Potentially, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. Just piggybacking off of that, if we went into a more collaborative space with this conversation, it would never mean that we kind of wash our hands of streets and roads and the safety of those elements, our largest asset here in Thousand Oaks, as it relates to this program and the surrounding areas to our schools.
Absolutely, that's a major focus of ours. As you mentioned, the streets and roads are the city's single largest asset, and so, and we continue to make investments to make them better, and also to maintain them in kind of tip-top shape and keep our, you know, roadways operating effectively, but with an eye on continually making traffic safety improvements. An example of that is every time we, even simple things like every time we do a paving project, we make sure to study all the roadways that are going to be repaved and see where we can optimize, and can we narrow some lanes, can we add some bike lanes, can we improve the crosswalks, et cetera. Those are areas that the city will always be focusing on.
One last question. How are we, I imagine, because I'm a parent, and I put my parent hat on, that if I was at school, dropping my child off at school, or walking them rather, and I felt like the speed was flowing just a tad bit, it made me uncomfortable. I feel like I would approach the district before I approach maybe council or public works, or, you know, its appropriate owner. Is there a pathway for that information to come to us already, and how effective have we been in saying like identifying it real like solutions if there is a, like a bubbling effect that's happening and we need to address it?
Absolutely, yeah, there's, you know, the school district and the city are in partners in that regard. We are alerted to some of those situations by the school district, sometimes by principals, sometimes by the crossing guard themselves. We've made, as I referenced earlier, some of these bulb-outs we've done have helped the situation. We've also done, for instance, at Kalina, we upgraded the pedestrian crossing there after, and we added some red curb to help improve compliance rates by the public.
Yeah.
Just on topic of talking with the schools, we're in regular contact with them about safety. Matter of fact, they all know at the beginning of the school year, we patrol the schools heavily, and throughout the school year, we monitor those. And one of the real effective things we found is communicating through the school to parents about safety issues that we're having, because a lot of people driving in the area during those times are parents. So there's, there's really a lot of communication going on between us and the school district on safety around the campuses.
Yeah, I imagine it's a lot of parents trying to get to work. I wanted to make a note, just a comment, because some of the schools, I'm trying to find my note here, some of the schools that are not meeting do have other, like, elements, other safety elements to help kind of control speed or safety already. Is there a standard we could just adopt for our, you know, is that, I'm pulling the new kid on the block card, can, is that, is that a lot, is that a huge ask to say, like, as a standard, the surrounding streets and roads for our schools need to be, there need to be more layers of safety and mitigation in place?
Yes, that's not a new concept. There was a big push about 10 years ago for Safe Routes to Schools, which is a program that helped generate a lot of the existing components, and enhanced crosswalks, and flashing beacons that already exist at many of the campuses, many of which already have them. And as I mentioned earlier, some of the ones that currently don't have the high number of pedestrian volume, or have low volume, already have various warning systems, beacons, traffic signals, and several of them we're looking to upgrade as well. Each location has a different characteristic of streets around it. I mean, some are on arterial roads like Kalina, and other ones are deeply embedded in residential neighborhoods with, you know, very low-speed traffic. So there's not one engineering solution for all of them, but we definitely do study all of them. A new, an additional element related to what you just mentioned that we're doing in the, this summer is looking at all of those school crossings, the marked crossings, and making sure that this new daylighting law, this assembly bill with not parking within 20 feet of the intersection is more appropriately indicated or enforced, so we can help provide better visibility for pedestrians crossing as well. So this is an ongoing activity all the time. This is why the city has a traffic engineering department, to help do the physical infrastructure and engineering solutions needed to help improve safety.
Thank you. I realize I'm pushing outside the policy, but thank you for the information.
If I may, Mayor.
Mr. Here.
One more thing, Councilmember Gutierrez, just to temper that, and I appreciate Nader's response, I just want to say that there are sometimes streets and highways codes and standards that we must comply with, and if it doesn't warrant, if it doesn't meet certain requirements or standards or testing, then we don't put things in. And a perfect example would be such as speed signs, right, speed limit signs. We always have to go through that process of what the speed should be, right? Same with...
Yeah, stop signs.
Stop signs, or lights, speed humps, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to say that we always are evaluating it, but also we've got to make sure that we're just not putting it everywhere when it's not merited, or it's not warranted by the codes that we have to follow.
I appreciate that. I'm sure our taxpayers do as well.
I want to follow up on a question that Mayor Proton Taylor kicked us off with regarding data around some of the safety devices the city continues to install all over town. First off, with regard to RFRBs, these flashing yellow lights, are there studies that show a positive impact, either with regard to reduced accidents or fatalities with the installation of RFRBs?
Yeah, the published data from the Federal Highway Administration shows that there's a, that improvement of 98% of compliance to yielding to pedestrians when there is an RFRB.
98% compared with a lower compliance rate without the RFRB?
That it increases the yield compliance by 98%.
Oh, there's a 98% increase in compliance?
Yes.
I see, okay.
Yes, but that's a standalone analysis. That's not in lieu of crossing guards, that's just the RFRB itself assists with the driver yield.
Thank you for teeing up my next question so well. I'm wondering if there are studies that look at RFRB versus crossing guard?
Not that we...
And efficacy of either or both, or one or the other.
We haven't seen a comparison between the two in terms of published data. Remember, the RFRB is a traffic control device, you know, and it operates 24 hours a day. The crossing guard is not a traffic control device, it's, instead it finds, it helps identify gaps in traffic to help assist people to cross. So it's a little bit of a different mechanism, so there probably, there likely isn't a full accurate comparison between the two.
Fair point. But there is, would you agree, there is, of the studies data shows, there is a positive effect of the addition of an RFRB in terms of compliance?
Absolutely.
Very good. And then the same, similarly, is there a negative, is there data showing negative consequences from the removal of crossing guards? What happens with accident and/or fatality rates when that happens? Are there studies showing that?
Yeah, I haven't seen studies to that effect. I do know that the presence of a crossing guard doesn't appear to really increase walking to school significantly. I mean, we've seen that with 10, 11 sites on this program, which have a crossing guard, and there, you know, some of these sites have one person crossing, you know, low numbers. So I guess the converse is kind of not, there's not a direct comparison there, but in terms of the removal, and I don't have any data on that.
Okay, very good. On, there's been some discussion, Councilmember Gutierrez touched on this, regarding communication with the district, and that's really a policy question for this council to discuss, and we'll have that discussion after hearing from the public, about what dimensions of that might look like, what instructions we might provide to staff on that. That's all in the future, potentially. We might, going forward, have some asks around that in the future. But my next question has to do with the discussion, if any, with the district up to now. Have there been any sort of requests from the district regarding low-performing intersections where a principal or other district person comes to the city and says, hey, you know, we've got this one corner where there's only one or two or three students, but there's this other corner here where cars are going 50 miles an hour, and we could really use some resources over there instead of... Have there been any kind of discussions like that to this point?
Very limited, and what has happened in the light of what you're saying is, we have studied those additional locations when they've requested them, and actually, last year and this year, there's a few additional locations that were studied, and neither one had the requisite volumes that needed to qualify. But beyond that, no, there hasn't been any idea generation or suggestions or active involvement, I guess, from the school district in that regard.
Okay, so then in terms of substantive cooperation between the city and the district, in terms of where resources go, how they're allocated, when, any of that, would you say that there really hasn't been that kind of conversation to date? We might discuss having that in the future, but to date, there really hasn't, it's really been all on the city so far, since, from 1964?
For the most part, correct.
Today?
Yeah.
Right.
Mayor Newman, if I may add, based on that focus premise, yeah, I would agree with Mr. Haddar. However, with regards to school safety in general, including traffic intersections, there is regular, ongoing dialogue, particularly because when we receive that information, one of our first pieces of correspondence is to our school district counterparts, to make sure that they are apprised of that information as well. So in a broad sense, we are always looking at opportunities for improvement of school safety.
No, I appreciate that. I know the staff has been present at DAC meetings, as have some council members. Several of us have participated in multiple walk-in role events. So this is all a discussion around public safety, and I appreciate the district and city work collaboratively on public safety right now. But in terms of the crossing guard policy, where the guards go, where they're under or overperforming, where they might be reallocated, any of that, my understanding, and correct me if this is wrong, but my understanding is, from the city's founding until today, May 20th, there's been, this has been the city's call.
Yeah, based on the database analysis, correct.
Right. So following up on that, with regard to, on a question Councilmember Gutierrez asked, we're going to have a discussion about the structure of possible collaboration between the district and the city on this going forward, which would be a change from the current policy, where there's an objective formula, the city administers the formula, the end. In the future, there may, may, depending on what we discuss, be some measure of division of labor, I don't know what the right term here is, but some sort of cooperation toward a solution that is different than the current policy. And I've got a couple of questions around the spectrum of possibilities there. I'm not, I'm not trying to nail us down before we get in order. I'm not trying to nail us down before we get into our discussion. This is more in the spirit of, I'm asking questions about what shape that might take. So on the one end of the spectrum is the status quo, where the city continues to maintain 100% responsibility for crossing guard placement, costing, liability, as we do with everything else, public safety. The other end of the spectrum is the district takes that over completely. I'm not advocating for either of those ends of the spectrum or any point in between. I'm asking, I want to ask or understand a couple of things before we enter into that discussion to hopefully have more informed discussion about that. So issue number one with regard to public safety is liability. How are other districts or other cities where there is cooperation between a city and a school district? How are they handling that important question of liability when labors are shared between two agencies?
The few that we've seen have an MOU between the agencies and then often the work, the program is contracted out along with the associated liability to a third-party firm to perform basically the functions of the crossing guard, the labor associated with managing the crossing guard program.
So I'm not sure, in deference to your expertise, Mr. Heers, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or Mr. Heer, but in that example where there's a third party who's administering it, does liability attach to that third party, to the city, to the school district, to all three? How does that work?
The ones I've seen have, you know, like any other city contract or agreement that the city has with a vendor or a consultant or contractor, that contract includes the hold harmless and other liability and insurance clauses that are included in there.
Are there examples of other collaboration where it is the city that pays for the program, but the school district has at least partial or maybe full decision-making power onto what intersections crossing guards are deployed at?
In that specific example, the Oak Park School District is entirely managing their crossing guard program there. And they're reimbursed partially by the county. So that's very similar to align with what you're referring to.
But they're essentially managing the program in terms of saying crossing guards here, 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 and here.
Correct.
And Mayor Newman, if I can bring one other example up that Nodder had mentioned earlier. In the city of Antura, where the city is responsible for the sites that meet the state standard and the school district is responsible for anything beyond that, that contract rests with the school district and then the city provides a reimbursement for their share of the sites to the school district on an annual basis.
Very good. And again, I want to make clear, I'm not advocating any of these models. I just want to understand what some of our options might be when we get to that discussion. So I appreciate your sharing some details about how other folks do this. Thank you for that. Council, are there any other questions of staff before we go to public comment? Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. Really quickly, if we move forward with conversations, does that pause our current kind of findings with the current policy? Or is that up to us?
I will take that. Certainly, if it's the council's direction this evening for our team to engage in a discussion with the school district team and there is an interest in that, and I think it's important to stress they're their own governmental entity, so there would need to be an interest in that, then we would likely make a recommendation if we're moving towards a different model that we could contemplate tolling the policy for one year in order to maintain some level of continuity as we transition to something different. But, you know, again, there may or may not, if the council directs, then it may or not be interest. And we obviously do have an adopted policy, council adopted policy. So that would be something that we would revert back otherwise.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Stay there. We'll come back to you. But we now move to public comment. I see for this item, we have eight speakers. Speakers, because this is a department report, will have three minutes each. I'll call the next three speakers up and ask that the two speakers who are on deck, as it were, take these seats behind the lectern so we can move efficiently. And I do want to make one more ask. This is a, historically, I know it's shocking to say there's been some controversy or contention around this issue in the past. I ask if you hear someone who has an opinion different than yours, or especially if you hear someone who has an opinion different than yours, that you refrain from reacting. Similarly, if you hear some comment you like, that you refrain from applauding. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to have their say and that we respect one another. So with that, let's begin our public comment with the first three speakers, who are Betsy Connolly, followed by Kinsey Flame, and Nelson Bus. Dr. Connolly, good evening.
Hello. So it's hard to believe that more than two years have passed since you adopted the school crossing guard policy, a policy that I believe replaced your own community insight and staff's professional judgment with a strict formula of data points tied to mandated actions. And now here we are at a reckoning. It shouldn't surprise us that the number of children walking to school hasn't changed. Modifying behavior is incredibly difficult, probably the most difficult work of all. If we want the next wave of parents to encourage their children to walk to school, we have to make it safe and we have to make that safety visible. When families see other children walking, when they see crossing guards and warning signs, it builds confidence. Why does that matter? Because children who walk grow up to be adults who walk. Neighborhoods with people out and about are safer and more desirable places to live. Active sidewalks encourage human interactions and support local businesses. This is really about the kind of city we want to be. Let's allow our experts on both city and school district staff to work together to figure out the right solutions for each site. Some face high-speed traffic, others confounding patterns related to after-school programs. Certain locations likely need safety infrastructure upgrades rather than a crossing guard. I ask the city council to direct your staff to come back with a plan for each of these sites, one that depends on collaboration and professional insight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Connolly. We move next to Kinsey Flame, Nelson Bus, and Dylan Bus. Good evening, Ms. Flame, again.
Hello again. I'm here as a parent, community member, who deeply values the people who shape our children's lives every day. Often, it's just not teachers at the school that make the difference. It's also the mail carrier, the trash truck driver, the school custodian, and the crossing guard. These unsung heroes show up consistently and their presence matters especially to our kids. Crossing guards are often the very first smiling face our children see in the morning. They are not just holding stop signs. They're holding a space for safety, for calm, and for connection at the start and end of every school day. They help our kids get, they help our kids step into learning with confidence knowing someone is looking out for them. In February 2023, the city council adopted a new school crossing guard program policy that shifted away from community and expert input, relying instead on rigid data points tied to mandated actions. This policy removed discretion from those with the deepest understanding of our neighborhoods, the city council and the city's own safety experts. At this time, council members were assured that efforts would be made to increase the number of students walking to school. But changing behavior takes time, and the reality is that student walking rates have barely shifted. Now with the pause on guard removals ending this August, we are looking at the elimination of nearly half of our crossing guards, many intersections where safety is still a very real concern. Tonight's agenda includes a proposal to transfer oversight of the school crossing guard program to the Cano Valley Unified School District. I urge you to not take this step. Street safety is the city's responsibility, from speed limits and signage to sidewalk design and traffic flow. The city of Thousand Oaks holds the expertise and authority to ensure our roads are safe. Our council members were elected to bring a voice of the community into conversations about safety and infrastructure. Our school board, on the other hand, is elected to focus on education, not traffic engineering. If staff and logistical challenges exist, let's address them through partnership, not a handoff. A collaboration with the city and CBUSD that draws on each institution's strengths could lead to a better and more site-specific solution. The 2023 policy served as a useful tool assessment, but is also never meant to replace human judgment or lived experience. Let's take a step back. Let's continue to pause. Let's work together, city and district, to ensure that every child who walks to school is seen, safe, and supported. And I do have to thank Councilmember Adams and Chief Parrish for coming to our Walk to School Day. It was lovely. Although the lights that we were talking about earlier, they actually weren't working the day that we had our Walk to School. So that's the thing that we need is that consistency, that those lights are going to work, the crossing guard's going to be there. For example, at Banyan, when we had our crossing guard count, there was not even a crossing guard. So we are counting children walking across Lynn Road without a crossing guard. So I ask you again, I always ask this question as I leave, is how much is one child's life worth to you? To the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flame. Next up is Nelson Bus, followed by Dylan Bus, followed by Tristan Bus.
All right.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, city manager, thank you for your time. I wanted to state, I'm a huge fan of the crossing guard program. As most days, I find myself crossing two of the intersections manned by city employees, Dover-Gainesboro and Camino Manzano's Gainesboro. I understand that many of the schools, the number of parents driving to pick up and drop off far exceeds pedestrian and bike traffic. I'm sure there's many reasons, ranging from school choice to convenience. But in the six-plus years of walking my girls to school, I can tell you, I don't feel safe letting them walk alone. Morning commuters with their eyes on their phones or distracted by their passengers have made for more close calls than I can count at this point, at one intersection in particular. My daughter has spoken in these chambers about it, and the city repainted this crosswalk and added a sign at that intersection. Two weeks after coming back from walking to, two weeks ago, after coming back from walking that daughter to school, I got to point at that sign while in the crosswalk after a man barreled down on me while only looking up from his phone in time to see me dodge, at which point he slammed on his brakes. That afternoon, he apologized to me in front of the school as we were both picking up our girls. Now that I have a child at Redwood, I also get to see traffic there during pickup and drop-off. I have been struck for a while now how the bike lane ends on Gainesboro before getting to the school and the turn lane into the school. I find myself dismayed how we prioritize cars being able to get in and out over kids on bikes. The double-sided bike parking shoved up against the fence on campus, reducing its capacity by half, is an indicator of how cycle-unfriendly this traffic design is. For a week this fall, there was a motorcycle sheriff unit, thank you, Chief Parrish, out front patrolling that street on Gainesboro. I never saw him when he wasn't in the process of ticketing a driver, sometimes two or three, during the time I had walked back and forth. The city may not see that they're getting the full value of their money for these crossing guards, but I have no doubt that the city could definitely find ways to make these schools more safely accessible for students. For starters, I barely fit next to my child on a standard sidewalk and often have to move onto the street to let oncoming pedestrians pass. Protected bike lanes or moving street parking to the outside of the bike lane would definitely improve my confidence in sending my child to school on a bike. But mostly, I ask you, the professionals, to help us all find ways to make this city more walkable and bikable for our collective health, for the air we breathe, for the noise around us, and because I dream of a day I don't have to wait at three lights in order to grab breakfast with eggs and things. I wanted to add a couple of things that I heard during your discussion. At Janson-Marlow, that is right by the hospital, emergency vehicles can barrel through there. That's an important intersection regardless of how many people are there. At this intersection I'm talking about, at Norman and Warwick, there are four families on my street. There are three families that come across the other side. At the very least, that's 20 people that go through that intersection, and we don't have a crossing guard. Also, you said that we can reach out to people. Jim Masico from Traffic got an email from me on August 27th about Gainesboro. He said he'd get back to me in two weeks. He has never gotten back to me.
Thank you, Mr. Bus. We move on now to Dylan Bus, followed by Tristan Bus, and then Juliet Skidmore.
Hello, city council staff. I've spoken here before about the four-way stop and is very grateful for the new stop signs and pay. Today, I'm talking about the crossing guards. My family and I are great fans of the crossing guards. And I get how you're debating if you should stop paying for 10 of them. I also get that you might want to stop paying for the ones that not many people use. But I think that this is not a great idea because of the people who use it. There are about 7,500 pedestrian fatalities and 44,000 car crash deaths each year in the U.S. And we should try and lower it. So I think this is an option, but I would love it if you kept paying for them. This would be an amazing birthday present from the city council for my birthday in two days. Best regards, Dylan Leafbus.
Dylan, I just want to add, one, happy birthday. And two, I really appreciate your coming to speak to the council. I hope you'll come back. Next up is Tristan Bus, followed by Juliet Skidmore, and then Devin Lucarelli.
Hello, city council members. My name is Tristan Bus. My younger sister spoke twice in this room. She talked about the crossroad at Warwick and Norman and now about the current topic. My sister and I walk to school. Our dad walks with us, and we noticed that not many people walk to school. I think that if we keep our crossing guards, more people will walk due to the safety that the guards supply us with. I also think you should extend the bike lane near Redwood Middle School. It stops before we can get into the school, making it difficult to get to school on our bikes. It also makes the sidewalks more crowded, and the sidewalks are already quite thin. You should also extend the sidewalk as it will encourage people to walk to school and the guards will be used to help them walk. Thank you for listening to my presentation.
Thank you, and thank you again for coming to speak with us. Please come back soon. Next up is Juliet Skidmore, then Devin Lucarelli, then Gerald Ludlow. Ms. Skidmore, good evening.
Hello. My name is Juliet Skidmore, and I would like to speak in favor of the crossing guards. Because of these brave people, 20 to 50% less pedestrians are injured every year. These people greet us with a smile every day and bring more positive energy to our everyday lives. I know I'm always nervous when I cross the street and I always have it there with someone to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for coming to speak here. Next up is Devin Lucarelli, then Gerald Ludlow.
Hello. I'd like to speak in favor of the crossing guards because they help our community, like, stay safe and less people get injured each year because of them. My friend walks to school every day and she feels safer with the crossing guards there, and they deserve more respect than we actually give them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments, and thanks very much for coming in to speak. Then our final public speaker on this item is Gerald Ludlow. Good evening.
Lou, thanks. Sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking, so sorry if it sounds a little disjointed. First, what this presentation did not tell us was that the city has not provided consistent crossing guards to help families feel like the locations are safe. Banyan Elementary School has a crossing on a 50-mile-an-hour road across multiple lanes on Lynn Road where cars frequently hit 65 miles an hour, which I don't even know how that's possible with two traffic lights on either side. Somehow, they can still reach 65. One never knows what days the crossing guards will be there and what days they won't. Parents just can't trust that inconsistency. Now, I can only speak to the Lynn and Null- Now, I can only speak to the Lynn and Nullwood Crossing, which you're talking about defunding, and I can tell you myself and my 90-pound dog crossing the street, most people will stop, but it only takes one not to stop, and I can't tell you the number of times, even with me and my 90-pound dog, someone just didn't stop. They just didn't care. And the only time they did stop was when I pulled out my phone and started recording them. Only then do those drivers that don't care stop, because all of a sudden, it seems to them there's personal consequences for not stopping. What stopped them was consequences, or the potential for. Maybe the city council can do something about that. There are consequences for people running those roads and those crossings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional public speakers? Okay, thank you. We go back to staff for any responses or follow-up.
Yeah, thank you. I'll address some of the comments that we've heard and then allow others to fill in any additional information. On the last speaker, on Banyan, that has consistently been the lowest usage crosswalk in the city, so when we have had instances of, whether it was, you know, flu season or we've got six or seven guards out at the same time, or the staffing challenges we had a couple of years ago after COVID trying to actually recruit and hire crossing guards, there is a sequence or order of operations of the intersections that get, you know, removed for that day if there is a staffing shortage in Banyan and Aspen, and some of the ones with less than a handful of pedestrians using them have always been the ones that had to be, you know, abandoned for that, that one particular day. But a lot of our staffing has been bolstered as of late, and we've had much, much better coverage. We agree with many of the speakers in terms of the, the concept of each school having their own specific needs and circumstances, and that the kind of specialized and tailored level of service on a more localized basis could potentially be better managed by the schools themselves as opposed to, you know, from, you know, from City Hall. The 2023 policy was discussed. That policy actually improved upon what was the existing policy beforehand. It actually provided several more pathways and alternatives for schools to qualify for crossing guards than the old one did. And so, and it also was much more clear than the, the previous one, which allows clarity for not only the city council and the staff is implementing the policy, but also the residents. They know exactly what needs to be done in order for them to have a, you know, qualify for a crossing guard, and primarily that is walk to school. So there was some discussion about the city no longer doing engineering or traffic safety improvements in the future if the program is transferred to the CVUSD, and that, that is not, as was discussed earlier at length, that is not something that would be included with that transfer. The city would continue to upgrade and improve pedestrian crossings, traffic signals, crosswalk striping, lighting, and all of the other elements associated with the roadways and bike lanes, et cetera. We will also follow up on the, the one resident, on their outstanding issue. I think we had addressed a few others from that resident over the past few months, but we'll make sure to circle back on the Gainesboro question that they, they had. That's all I have for now.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to add a couple of other points. One of the upsides with school districts participating in, in the administration of this program is that there's this built-in redundancy. As Nader mentioned, when you have, our, our crossing guards are generally retirees, and so when one calls out sick, we often do not have that redundancy in the backup, where it's very difficult to find somebody last minute. And the way that this program is administered with some of our peer agencies around the county, where the school district, whether it's volunteers, teachers, principals, folks that are already on staff planning to be at the campus for the day, is that there's almost a guarantee there will be somebody waiting in the wings if somebody doesn't show up for work for any particular reason. With regards to some of the other points that were made, the schools, as, as Nader said, are best positioned to know the ins and outs of any particular schedule for a particular school site. In addition to that, there are plenty of school districts, while the streets are ours responsibility, there's plenty of other school districts that still participate in this activity. In fact, when you look at the survey of information, we are rather in the minority on this front. Finally, with regards to those sites that did not meet this round's threshold, it doesn't mean that they're off the list forever. The, the communication will still go out, the outreach will continue, we will still make traffic engineering improvements, as Nader noted, and with the hopes that these sites do meet the threshold again. But really, this entire conversation, as, as the council enters its deliberation, is really about how do we stretch the taxpayer dollar to better deliver service to our community? And, and if we want to maintain a level of service beyond what the policy calls for, there's an opportunity, which is part of your recommendation, to explore those options with the school district.
Thank you. Are there follow-up questions of staff? I, I have one question about, maybe a couple of questions about crossing guard staffing. Did, did I understand correctly that in a program with 24 crossing guards, we had up to six or seven out at one time during flu season?
That has happened, and in fact, that, I mean, obviously that happened significantly during COVID, but also it, it is happening, it did happen this, this winter. There was a pretty big uptick in, you know, influenza going around, and we had, you know, almost, almost double digits of, of crossing guards ill at one time, or if you're near the holidays and people's other schedules. And as you might imagine, this is not a, a full-time job for any of the crossing guards, and so, you know, there, there is a fair amount of turnover as well in that regard. So I would add one more comment also to earlier. The CVUSD's boundary is larger than the city. They have campuses that are outside of the city and in unincorporated Ventura County, so that's potentially another factor in, in regarding having a program be more comprehensive and maybe be able to better serve the entire district more than the, the city's able to do. And the school district oversight and management of crossing guard programs is, is specifically allowed or authorized in the California Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual. It authorizes the governing board of any school district to recruit and assign and deploy crossing guards, so that's, I meant to mention that earlier.
And then to follow up, I know when we discussed hiring the last time, I think this was two years ago, the city had encountered some difficulty in, in getting even fully-staffed, let alone having substitutes, at, at least at that time. I think there are substitutes now, but...
Yes, yeah, we have increased the pay, we've done lots of recruiting and advertising, and, but as I mentioned, it's, it's ongoing, it's basically, it's an ongoing recruitment year-round because of the kind of the turnover of the program.
One of the things I heard personally multiple times at that time was that the requirement to work a split shift was a sticking point. Is there, is, is that still a hard and fast requirement? And how do other area agencies deal with that, that particular issue of morning shifts and, and afternoon shifts?
Yes, you're referring to the fact that, you know, the, the person has to work, they only get an hour or two in the morning, an hour or two in the afternoon. That's...
What I'd heard, and I'm, I'm not familiar with the current policy, but what I'd heard was people would, would tell me, you know, I'm, I'd love to be a crossing guard, but I can only work in the morning or only in the afternoon, but the city only accepts both, not one or the other. I don't know if that's still the case. I don't know how other agencies handle that.
Yeah, that's still our preference, but I think we've, by virtue of need, we've become more flexible in that regard. But that's another point in the, in the favor of if there's existing, you know, safety personnel or yard duties or other on, that CVUSD may have on campus, a lot of those concerns really potentially are abated. They, you know, they maybe don't have split shift, there's somebody already on site, that they don't have to mobilize to the site twice a day or send two different people to the site AM and PM, and then, you know, you have a little bit of inconsistency from the morning to the afternoon, and so...
Do we know what other, other agencies, how they're handling that? Is there a, is it, is it pretty common that, that both require both shifts?
It looks like, it's fairly common for the entire program to be outsourced, contracted out. There's a firm or two that, that handle that type of work, so I, I can't speak to how they address that issue.
Okay, very good. Mayor Proton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a comment about the dynamic between city council and the school district and that it's, you know, primarily our body that, it's not primarily, it is, our body who makes sure that the public is safe, that the, that the, you know, crosswalk's in the right place, and the comment was about if this is in partnership or even, you know, becomes the authority of the school district and that not being their expertise. Can you walk me through that dynamic? Will we still have the same oversight that we have currently on this, the public safety on our roads? And then maybe the follow-up would be, for the two examples you gave with Oak Park and Ventura, I imagine we would potentially take a similar approach, potentially?
Yeah, I'll cover that, that first question. Yes, there's, we would certainly continue to be actively engaged in addressing and bolstering, improving, maintaining traffic safety, crosswalks, lighting, you know, traffic signals, et cetera, you know, all the different options under, that, that exist out there to continue to help make our streets as safe as they can be.
And Mayor Proton Taylor, with regards to the second question, regardless of who administers the program, the City of, of course, would be an active partner regardless of where it lies. However, you know, without getting too prescriptive about where this may eventually end up, I, I think it's important to note that really tonight's recommendation is just focused on starting the conversation, if that's the council's will tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Engler. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, kind of a corollary to what Councilmember Taylor was speaking about, can you go a little bit into the interactions we currently have with school district? Couple of the speakers were encouraging us to have more or more involved communications with the school district. What type of communications do we have now?
Yeah, the, our communications director touched on that a little bit earlier, but the district has not been actively engaged on this topic on an ongoing basis. There's been some individual dialogue, and then obviously we, we communicate and request information at the end of every year to make sure we got the, the bell schedules correct for the next year, et cetera, and, you know, we, we provide them information to share in their newsletters, but we're, we're kind of removed a little bit in that regard from the parents and the students, because it's, you know, that communication generally has to flow through the school district. A lot of the parents and students don't live in Thousand Oaks, where they're out of, out of district, or they're coming from unincorporated, or they're coming from other areas, so there's a lot that the city really is not equipped or able to do that the, maybe school district could do better, however, yeah, that's an area that, you know, definitely could be improved upon.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think the schools, you know, they are in constant contact with their parents and students, but we don't have a working group or anything with the school district to address this type of issue, sort of as a, on needed, as needed basis.
Yeah, I mean, I guess there hasn't been an issue, it's just been the program's operating, and the, it's been entirely on the responsibility of the city to ensure it continues to operate. So the school district has not, you know, offered any assistance really, I guess, if that's what you're referring to.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff before we go to discussion? Okay, so to frame up the discussion, I want to echo points that have been made by staff and maybe check with Mr. Heer or Mr. Powers to make sure I, I understand the parameters of the discussion tonight. The specific recommendations from staff are, one, receive the report. We did, we had a policy that says take some measurements and report on those measurements, and, and that's, that's basically a receive-and-file item. The second one says, and I'm, I'm going to quote the recommendation, "If desired, authorize staff to, to engage with CVUSD on options for future program oversight." So I appreciate that that is open-ended, but, but it's the beginning of a discussion between two partners who would, at some point, have to agree on parameters. But what we could do tonight is two things, is one, provide direction on which way we the city would like that, that discussion to go, and two, what Mr. Powers mentioned earlier, which is possibly tolling the results of the current policy. And then I'll add a third item, which is not in the recommendations, which is discussion of any possible changes in policy. This is a, ultimately, this is a policy decision, which, which way we go. So anyway, I, I just wanted to tee up the discussion. Mr. Powers, Mr. Heer?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I, let me quickly say that as far as your, your last request, I would say that is not part of this agenda item, so you couldn't add that at this date for tonight. As far as, number one, you, you certainly hit that, and of course, with the SEQA. As far as the, the second recommendation, I think you, you know, staff's idea here was to bring this in front of you, this report, have you receive it, and then if you so authorize, have the city manager's office and staff start engaging in a conversation with the CVUSD to talk about these various options, and we've talked, heard a lot about them tonight. I, I think you, you initially touched it, Mayor, when you said, there's, you know, the parameters are, one end is going to be, we continue to keep it, and we keep it, and we have our policies, and that's what we have, and the other end is, it all goes, everything goes to the school district, the management, the cost, all that stuff goes to the district, and those are the two extremes, right? And so then what you, what we are asking for you to is to give us direction to start having that initial discussion and see where CVUSD is, right? I mean, that's part of the first equation is, are they interested in having a discussion with us about this and looking at options?
And what we mutually might agree on.
Correct, and then we could bring that back and discuss that.
Right.
Your other comment was, if you authorize such thing, then we could, as the city manager mentioned, you know, we, we delay any action on our current policy at this stage while those discussions are going on, and then we would, we would report back to you, and we can again have that further discussion about if there is some type of agreement, what the framework of that agreement is.
Okay, so in bounds, discussion of possible collaboration with the district. In bounds, possible tolling of current survey results and action as required by the current policy. Out of bounds, because it's not agendaized and therefore would be a Brown Act violation, changes to the existing policy.
That is correct.
Do I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me, Mr. Powers.
If I just might add one other piece to that, the, and the tolling component, you know, we have an existing council adopted policy, so in the event that the district was uninterested in dialoguing on, uh, transfer the program, then we do have a, have an existing policy, so we'll have some, some issue there. What I, procedurally, just so, I, what I would recommend is if, if we're going to engage in those conversations, there's going to need to be a runway to establish an MOU or something to that effect, if there is an interest, we would likely bring a subsequent item on consent just to formally toll that program for, for a year, just so you understand procedurally how, how that would work.
Very good. Okay, and thank you for setting the parameters for this discussion. I'll go ahead and open it up for council comment. Councilmember Gutierrez, would you like to begin?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Newman. Like many of the things I inherit as a new council member, I'm always excited to learn that we are going over and above, whether it's a state requirement or what a neighboring city will do or has done historically. I think I tell staff every chance I get that I'm really, I have, I, I gain a really, I, I gain a lot of insight and knowledge from the work that has been done and, and in these conversations, just kind of as I inherit the agenda as, as it would be. So I think I want to leave us with the sentiment of that same energy, and I say this probably quite often. quite often, I want to make sure that we are going into the conversation with really clear objectives. And the objectives that I would like to impart or ask for are high levels of collaboration and a continued generosity that is part of our brand as a city and partnering agency. I think we all collectively, CRPD, the district and the city, serve really well, and I think that is amplified when we partner effectively. And so I want to be really careful as to how I say the next thing. I, I would be, from a policy perspective and procedural perspective, if we were to hand over this discretion to the district, to me personally, it feels like we couldn't do it well, and I say that with the utmost amount of respect and understanding that that might not be what we're saying, that we are looking for opportunities to collaborate and propose an opportunity for there to be more impactful, informed oversight of the So I just want to make sure we're, we're stepping into this, not just trying to wash our hands of the policy. I would love for the discovery to be intentional and for there to be options. I don't want to walk into the district space and go, we're ready for you to do this now and we'll continue to work on streets and roads and you do what you do on your campuses, because that doesn't feel like collaborative partnership. That sounds like we're drawing a line and we'll stay on our, in our, on our side of the road and you stay on yours. So I just want to, I want to tout and praise the existing brand of the city that I get to inherit and ask that we really, really just step into this conversation with that energy. Second, I think we can acknowledge that hiring in this space has been really difficult for the city and we might not be equipped and/or in a space where we, where we need their support. We need the district's support to, kind of to the point that was mentioned earlier, if there's another campus employee that can fill in for someone who's feeling ill or wasn't able to make it to school. It just allows for that site continuity and kind of like ease of execution if, as things arise. So I think that, that's my comment. I always am so grateful for the work, the thoroughness of our, of our staff, but I would, I would, I just, by the policy itself, we just didn't allow for their, we didn't allow for a collaborative, it just wasn't, it isn't spelled out that there's a collaborative energy as part of this current policy. And, yeah, I would just love to see that going forward because I do agree that there are some site-specific needs that maybe our school district is more informed on. I might be repeating myself now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Engler. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too appreciate this, what the staff has put into this. Our policy, this is at least the second time that I've been involved in, in the policy. It's a policy that puts safety as a premium for our, for our students. I disagree a little bit with my colleague. I don't see the fact that kids aren't participating in it as, as a failure or anything, or that we've, we haven't done a good enough job. I'm not, you know, I'm not a psychologist. I don't know how the world works in this way, but in my opinion, it seems that this is a product that isn't interesting to some people right now. That said, we still do have a responsibility to help ensure that those children who wish to participate in any, any program like this are, do so in a safe way. With, in my opinion, the people who are closest to the issue and who are best, have the best knowledge about how to apply this type of position is the schools. One thing that was said tonight that I hadn't really given much thought about was that putting it at the source, in the schools, allows granularity that will, will address certain conditions at certain schools in a better way than we can do, since I think in some respects, we might be ignorant, and I fault us that we're not having that intimate relationships with the schools to where we are on top of those types of things. That said, the schools are still the location where the knowledge is held and where action is best taken. Years ago, I came, we came out to Thousand Oaks in 1990, so that's 35 years ago. You know, one of the reasons we came out was that we looked at the school district and found a school district that was second to none, and I trust that the schools will handle the affairs for our children. You know, I don't think the financial side is even in the question here, as some people say, who, who could put a dollar on anybody who gets injured? And that's not part of my equation. My equation is where is this problem, where is the issue best handled? You know, I trust the school district, and they handle all other aspects of, of our children, all the safety access at school, all the educational aspects at school. I think that their well-being is crucial to the school district, and I have, I have a firm belief that the schools can handle this as well. With our help, we're not going to abandon the school district to this. We, we will continue doing all the things we normally do. If, in collaboration, I would urge us to get a working group together as part of what we're doing, so we have that ongoing collaboration. But we will, we will collaborate with the schools in anything that has to happen. However, I think the schools are best positioned to be able to really handle the well-being of our children. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I do have to commend the city for running this crossing guard program since 1964 at great expense, but that's because the city wants our kids to be safe. Believe me, I know. I, my two daughters went through the school district from kindergarten all the way to Westlake High School, so I'm pretty familiar with that concept. And the city's policy-driven, you know, the council adopts policies, and the policy that we have now may not reflect exactly what's happening in the real world, as, as has been discussed. School enrollment's dropping, there's school choice now, and we gave it two years to try to build up the, the count on these crosswalks and to, basically, to no avail, which I don't think that's the fault of anybody, I just think that's more what is happening in the city of Thousand Oaks. So now we have this policy that, the way it's written, just, some people just don't think it's going to give the coverage that they would like to see. And I think, I think the city, you know, when it comes to roads and safety, we, we are the experts. We spend a lot of money keeping our roads, our crosswalks safe all over the city. But I think when it comes to the students and the parents, the school district's the experts on that, not necessarily the city. So it really comes down to who's going to make the decisions as to how we deploy these crossing guards? And frankly, I think the school district's in a better position to make those decisions at this point, where we are in the city's history, than, than we are. So, yeah, I definitely welcome a dialogue with the school district to try to craft a solution to this problem, to give better service, of course, and, and to, the kid's safety is paramount. So you might say, well, does, does the school district have the expertise to, you know, if they, to run a program like this? Well, I can tell you, Ventura Unified School District, Port Juanimi, Santa Paula are, in varying degrees, those school districts are running their crossing guard programs. And what they've done is outsourced it. They've outsourced it. And when you talk about liability, there's some, some companies that carry tremendous liability insurance. They take the headache out of hiring crossing guards, they do recruitment, they do background checks, and they can, they can do it pretty economically. So that's something I would like to look at, the potential for the district to be, start making the decisions instead of us, because I think they know better than we do. And I think they're in a much better position to do so. And certainly, the city can remain involved. Financially would be, you know, definitely appropriate. And when it comes to actually running the program, I'd like to really take a close look at outsourcing. There's a couple of good companies here, right here, there's one here in Southern California, they work with 150 different school districts, and it takes the headache away from both the city and the school district, and then the school district could have input with these companies as to how they want things to happen. And the city could be a financial partner. So I would like that to be the impetus of a discussion that we ultimately have with the school board.
Thank you. And before I go to Mayor Pro Taylor, Mayor Proton Taylor, pardon me, just like to ask a follow-up question of my colleague for clarification. Councilmember Adam, when you say you'd like the district to be involved in decision-making, I presume that, that covers the placement of crossing guards, correct?
That's exactly right. And, yeah, that's the issue, isn't it? You know, where, where do we want these crossing guards to be and at what locations? And, you know, our, our policy has tried to catch up, but we're at the point now where our policy just cannot give the coverage that some people are demanding. We've stretched it to the limit. It just can't get any more liberal, in my, in my opinion.
So, so if we were to enact a change, then, the change you would advocate is that the district would make the decisions about?
That's exactly right. Who knows better than the district?
Appreciate, appreciate the clarification.
Who knows better than the, of the parents and the kids than the district? It's certainly, certainly not us. We, we know how to keep streets safe, we know how to put in enhancements and flashing lights and all that stuff. That's, that's our job. But as far as staffing these places, I think the district should be making those decisions.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to kind of piggyback off of Councilmember Gutierrez. I had a similar, similar experience. I spent my whole life, I grew up here and I stayed. I never left and I didn't, I knew why our city was great, but I had a similar experience. When I got to know the staff, they were, the bar was put higher than I even thought. So I'm, just to give all the staff a lot of praise, you guys do a phenomenal job. And then to kind of piggyback off of another thing, my experience so far, I've never seen this council just throw an issue off to someone else. The way that I'm seeing this approach today has been consistent with my experience over the last three years, which is, we're coming at this with conversation from the residents, we're opening dialogue or potentially opening dialogue with the school board to see how to address this challenge that we have. I personally don't think it's a policy decision. I think the core issue is that times have changed. You know, you could, you could chalk that up to school choice. I know for me, as a parent, I think our community is safer today than when I grew up, and I find myself being more protective over my kids than my parents were with me, which, that's, I guess, a bigger conversation. I don't like that, though. I, I wish I felt comfortable enough to give my kids the freedom that I had in the 80s and early 90s, but that's the reality. The reality of the situation is that kids are not walking to school at the same rate as, as we did when we were kids. And so I think the question becomes, what do we do? What is the best solution to find the best outcome? I don't think we're going to get there with policy. You know, from some of the remarks, we're, you know, we're, we're following data and we're creating a framework. That's kind of what you have to do with policy, but we have found a position where there might be a greater need. I personally think that's probably going to be more of a boutique approach. How do we offer a solution for a school where there's only maybe five kids using the crosswalk? And that's not to discredit five over 20. What do we do in that scenario? I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea if potentially the principal is helping, an assistant is helping, and I don't want to start a fight with Ventura or Oak Park, but I tend to believe our school district is superior. A lot of people come to our area to go to schools. I think they would be beyond qualified to navigate the crosswalk next to their school potentially better than we are. I would totally welcome a conversation with our partners to see what the best approach moving forward is. So, you know, what that ends up looking like, if it's outsourced, for me, I think that's too soon to tell, but I don't necessarily look at this as a bad thing. I, I'm more or less looking at, how do we get to a better solution than where we're at today? And I do tend to believe that if we're trying to figure out how to create something for the schools where there's just not that many kids walking, maybe that is a better outcome. So I personally would welcome that conversation, but I'd love to hear the mayor speak if there's any additional conversation to be had, I welcome it.
I appreciate that. Forgive me in advance for some somewhat disorganized thoughts, I have several on this topic.
You know, me going second to last was hard enough, but go for it.
The first thing I want to echo my colleague's comments in thanking staff. You've done your usual excellent job in doing a difficult task that this council asks you to carry out, and I appreciate that. As you know, I did not support the policy, but it doesn't mean that, that I think staff, you know, was wrong to do it or shouldn't do it or anything like that. I think you've done very well with a policy that, as I said two years ago, I really don't have any problem at all with the objective formula that is in use, or the way the formula is being used. It's, it's being done by professional traffic engineers in a professional way, and I think that's very good. However, I also want to point out that this is first and foremost a discussion about public safety. And we have really, really good public work staff. They do a terrific job on our roads, on infrastructure, on maintenance, which is really important, on finding new ways to make us all safer, even though it's not directly a public safety job. I'm very appreciative of that, and I appreciate the need here for good data and good measurements to get that data. However, in any discussion of public safety, all of that is necessary, but it's not sufficient. What we need here is for the public to feel safe, as well as there being measurements that say we are safe. And the reason it was a four-to-one vote last time, with me being the only no vote, was not because I disagree with the measurement or the formula, but rather because I think we need something more than that in, in our approach to this. We, we had a discussion about naming a couple of months ago, I think in late February, and there was a comment made that we really need to have intangibles as part of the discussion. And that was, that was about a plaque on a wall somewhere. So if we need intangibles for that discussion, we, we need them a thousand times more when it comes to the safety of children here. it comes to the safety of children here. And we don't have that currently. And frankly, without, and I don't mean this in a derogatory way to staff at all, but as several of my colleagues have noted, we frankly don't have the expertise to do that. That expertise resides within the school community, not, not in city staff. So I, really, ideally, what several of my colleagues said, if I can boil it down, is we need both. We need the expertise and the buy-in of parents and school administrators, and ultimately students, who, who know best what, what works. And we've heard the word boutique from Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor. City Manager Powers and I, City Manager Powers has raised that term in private conversations we have about that. Every school is unique and special and has unique requirements. We need to get those requirements in order to make decisions. And we're not doing that currently. I appreciate all the city has done in terms of outreach and education. We've got a website. We've all gone to different walk and run, rock and roll events. I personally have gone to somewhere between 10 and 20 walk and roll events, a bunch of DAC meetings. I've had meetings with principals. I'm very aware that I'm in the city government, not in the district government, and I'm not telling anybody what to do here. But my role was as a resident, trying to encourage more walking. But the data is clear on this. We, we really haven't changed things in two years of this. And I agree with my colleagues when they say the reason that hasn't happened is because we don't have this intangible element of bringing expertise in. So we're having a discussion about, do we bring in the district? And if so, under what terms? And I wanna say a couple of words about that. In any kind of negotiation, and that's, that's what will happen next, I always try to think about the person or people on the other side of the table, put myself in their shoes, and think, what, what problem are they trying to solve? What objections might they have? How do we cooperatively work out something that is mutually agreeable and solve the problem we're both interested in solving? Nobody wants to cut crossing guards here. We want, we all want more kids to walk and ride to school. So how do we best get to that point? Well, if I were in the shoes of the district, I'm not altogether sure. I would, I would be as willing to accept the role that, I, I haven't heard anybody here suggest, let's just wash our hands of this. We're not saying that. I haven't heard anyone say anything, even in the same zip code as that here tonight. But, but there have been discussions of transference, or administration, or something like that on the district's side. And we don't know where that discussion will land. We have to have, we haven't had that discussion. We need to have that. I'm, I'm not altogether sure the district will lend a willing ear to that, or frankly, that they should. Public safety, as Councilmember Adam has pointed out, public safety on city streets is a city responsibility, and it will remain so, regardless of where on the spectrum of 0% to 100% involvement the district has. So I guess my ask would be, yes, let's definitely have heavy input from the district. Let's have meaningful conversations without finger pointing. And I raise that because I have heard people from the city side and from the district's side say things in this discussion in the past few years that have made me cringe. Let's have a collaborative discussion here and work out where we're both comfortable having the division of labor. Personally, I think public safety should remain with the city. But I'm very comfortable having much more input from the, the district in terms of, as Councilmember Adams suggested, where we place crossing guards. I'm also supportive of, of the concept of the city continuing to fund this, given that these are, these are people who are working on city streets in some public safety role. I understand there are limits around public safety. They're not traffic policemen or police officers, but, but this is a city street we're talking about. And I also wanna make the final point. This isn't about the money. We, we said that two years ago, and that was true then. It's true now. There is something in the, in the staff report, if you read the staff report. They always wrap up by saying, we're doing this because it supports one or more city goals. And the goal that was given here was that we are fiscally responsible in the city. And some, including myself, misread that to think, we're gonna save a buck by cutting 10 crossing guards. That wasn't the intent at all. The intent is, because we are so well-managed, let's, let's continue to look at ways we can better manage our resources by getting better management of this program, by collaborating with the schools. I would also prefer in the future, and this is, this goes for this project, this is the last point I'll make on this, this project and all other projects, we are giving stating goals affirmatively. So yes, it's true. We can maybe be more responsible about how we spend our money on this if we have a discussion with the schools. That's great. What we're not currently doing, and I think we should begin exploring, is when other goals are negatively impacted, we should be saying that as well. And the reason I'm raising that is the very next goal, when we're talking about city impacts, is one that says, and I'm quoting, "We maintain a strong commitment to public safety." A strong commitment to public safety. And I don't think it's in anyone's interest, or anyone would, would disagree, that cutting crossing guards would increase public safety. I don't think anyone here wants to cut crossing guards. I'm supportive of this tolling concept, to hold off on that until we look at possible reconfigurations. But I think we should be clear about where we are adding to goals and subtracting to goals, and come out in some collaborative way where we can, we can have a positive impact. Anyway, that's, again, pardon me for being a little disorganized with that, but those are my thoughts on the topic. Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna take your approach. I'd love to ask you just a couple of questions of that first. I don't necessarily see it as addition or subtraction, and this is why I wanna know your opinion. I'm more or less looking at it, how do we balance public safety? We wanna be wise with our tax dollars, but we also want the kids to be safe, right? And you said something, you know, we want the public to feel safe as, I don't know if you said as opposed to being safe, or in relation to being safe, or having both components. How I look at it, I, I don't think it would be worse if the school district and kind of those that know the school intimately are managing the, the crosswalk next to them. I almost feel like that would be a better experience, not a worse one. And then the, the second part, I guess, is, and I haven't called anybody to ask in the other cities, but through the idea of ownership brings accountability, right? I would imagine that with Ventura and them having the city that's overseeing the policy that sits, excuse me, sits in the state regulation, and then the school district that's managing the ones that don't, I'd imagine that they actually have a better outcome because you have two bodies that hold accountability to create the best outcome. Do you see it differently than me, or did I read into that statement and take something else from it?
No, I think we agree on the general issue that, that we want everyone to feel safe, right? And we wanna do things, if, if there are things we're not doing now that we could do, to increase that feeling of safety and have this virtuous cycle going upward where more people get out of their cars because they feel safer.
Right.
So more kids ride, so more people feel safer, so, and, and on and on and on, where currently we're going the other direction. I'm for whatever ends up in that result.
Whatever, whatever ends up in like the best.
Right, right.
The best experience for the kids and parents.
But my caution on that is twofold. One, to be blunt, on the city side, I have heard before comments to the effect of, we're just not hearing from the schools. And, and in fairness, we, we the council, we're, we're the ones that set policy, so we haven't actually given that direction. That's, that's one of my, was, one of my questions tonight. And then two, is on the school side. I could go to, I, I, let's say I've gone to 20 events in the past couple of years, which is probably a fair estimate.
Especially as mayor.
Right, right. Well, I, I was doing this a long time before, when I was just a plain old council member.
Right.
This started in 2023, and I went to the most events the first year. But I could go to 200 events, 2,000 events, and maybe still not see a real change. And the point I wanna make here is that a comment one of the school board trustees made to me, which I strongly agree with, which is that ultimately, walking and riding the school lives or dies with families, with the parents, with the students, and those closest to them, and whether that's PTAs, DAX, folks that are outside of city government. So it's a little sensitive, you know, in that, in that, one of the reasons people live here, it's a safe place, and I would, I would agree with anyone who says, public safety is job one for us. But, but on the other hand, we're, we're trying to ensure the maximally safe environment for something where, and a different agency, and maybe, maybe, I'd say, the, the students, the parent, well, the parents in that, in that agency ultimately get to decide.
Right, okay. So then it sounds like we see it the same way as far as what we want the outcome to be. Maybe there's some difference on how we get there, but at least for tonight, and, and I'll, I'll just move the motion because I'm making an assumption, let's start the dialogue. Let's see what the school district, how they take the news. I mean, they might say, no way, we don't know yet. So because of that, I'll move 12A, and let's see, let's see what the outcome is, and then we'll take it from there once we have a little bit more information.
Appreciate that. I'm gonna ask a question of Mr. Heer, just on process here. There's been a lot of really good input from the council on different aspects to direct staff to have a conversation with the district. My question of staff, let me know if this is in bounds, because this is a department report. We, we're not closed hearing, open hearing here.
Correct.
My question of staff is just, do you have enough? Is, is the direction from council crisp enough, clear enough, directed enough to begin that conversation?
Should I take another stab at it? Or do you think we're good?
No, I think, I think we've, we definitely are hearing and understanding the, the direction.
So then maybe I'll, I'll move 12A to receive the reports, and then direct staff to open the dialogue with the school district to see what their temperature is on this conversation.
Based on, would you accept a friendly amendment to that?
Give it to me.
Based on input from?
Yeah.
The entire council.
That works.
Because we've all, we've all given good inputs here. Mr. Powers?
Correct. There has been inputs, but to be clear, they've been conflicting a little bit. I mean, we've, we've heard, so I wanna be clear, because in that sense, you're kinda setting up the conversation for, to say, well, that didn't address what I had. So with that in mind, I just wanna be clear, you know, we have, I've heard different things from different ones, I think we all have up here about, you know, whether it's, we maintain ownership, whether the district takes ownership, whether the district provides input to the city on those things. So anyway, I just, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear, because I don't wanna set our team up for, for not meeting the mark for the council.
Why don't we, let me third, third try maybe is the charm. Why don't we open the conversation and let's see where we're at? Once we have more options, then we can decide at the next step.
Yeah, I was just about to say to Mr. Powers' point, I'm gonna murky the waters further and say, you're gonna hear even more conflicting points once, once you start talking with the district, because they, they may have, we, we don't know yet. We haven't had this conversation yet.
I, I'd like to make a clarification, just because my comment came up a few times.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my intention of stating what I did, and very briefly, was because I wanted it to be very clear that we go into any conversation, understanding what our goals are, and I didn't want the goal to solely be a transfer of ownership. So I just, that's the clarity.
Okay, so Drew.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute.
The staff recommendation.
If I might.
Can I? If you read the staff recommendation, it's very clear. Discuss with the school district options for future program oversight, including possible transfer of the program to CVUSD. So that's what's being moved. We're gonna discuss that. Who's gonna make the decisions as to where these crossing guards go? I mean, there it is in black and white.
Mr. Mayor, I think.
Go ahead, Mr. Engler, then I wanna respond to Mr. Councilmember Adam.
I think we have, and City Manager is correct in stating, we have a spectrum up here of approaches.
Yeah.
As you pointed out earlier, everything from status quo to full use by CVUSD. I think the, the staff report and the staff recommendation covers that possibility of, I think staff, I believe, has enough of a feel from the council, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, about the, the breadth of our interest in, in having the CVUSD be more of a partner with us, up to and including having them run this program, us pay for it, not pay for it. All these things are part of that spectrum that could possibly arise out of discussions. From my own perspective, I think the, the decision-making is best lies with the school district, because of the things I mentioned earlier. But that's, that's the spectrum of, of possibilities that were laid out here in, in the possibilities.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler. I wanna, I wanna add to that in response to Councilmember Adam, to call attention to a couple of weasel words in the, in point, in point two. This is on options for future program oversight, including possible transfer of the program to CVUSD. These are very, by, by design, I think, I think Mr. Powers would agree, by design, staff, staff, if I may continue, staff by design left this to be open-ended, because it's really ultimately a policy question for us to decide. I don't think we five are gonna decide tonight, CVUSD's gonna get 100% of this, or 0% of this, or some number in between. I don't think that's the point of this exercise. It, it is deliberately open-ended based on the outcome of a discussion we're going to have, and that's all.
Of course, yeah. We, we don't know where negotiators are gonna go. But if you're saying, well, I'm not gonna consider the transfer of the program to CVSD, then that's a no vote.
I don't, I don't believe that's what the recommendation says.
Okay.
The recommendation says, if desired, start a conversation. It doesn't, it doesn't say, we must, we must then, it doesn't even follow, we must then have a transfer.
If you're ruling out the possibility of any kind of transfer of this program to CVUSD, then that does not coincide with the motion on the floor.
I don't think there's any, I don't read anything at all.
We're gonna look at the possible transfer of the program to CVSD.
I'm sorry, there's nothing, there's nothing in the recommendation that says, we all have to agree that there should be a transfer. There's nothing in that language that, that says that whatsoever. It says there should be a discussion.
Mayor, if I can just, maybe we can cut to the chase. So the, the second recommendation, we have the first one, obviously, the last one, SEQA. The second one is, this is a lot of technical information, right? And to have that conversation, we're asking you to grant staff to grant staff the authority to start that negotiation, start that discussion, and be open-ended to options. I mean, there could be a number of options that are there. That's exactly what this recommendation states. It's to ensure that we have a ability to go through the wide range of options in the discussions. It might be short, it might be long, but that's what this, this recommendation does, is to have an open-ended type of, of discussion with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with your, your reading of that, that point.
Okay, so my motion stands? It was good? All right.
Your, 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 your motion, as I understand it, Mayor Protem, is, is the language as written for recommendation two, correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to move it as written.
And then also recommendation three, that this is sequo exempt.
And it's sequo exempt.
Okay. Okay. So are we all good with that motion? Will the clerk please prepare us for a vote?
That motion passes 5-0.
Yeah. I'm going to recommend we take a, actually a 10-minute recess. Let's reconvene at 8:50. Thank you.
Okay, please, please take your seats and we will resume. Our next item. Number 11A in the agenda is the Downtown Thousand Oaks Project. Presenting on this item tonight is Deputy City Manager Akbar Alakhan, Community and Cultural Services Director Jonathan Sret, Finance Director Jamie Boscarino, and other staff available for questions. Mr. Alakhan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for everyone that stuck around at this late hour to hear the presentation tonight. This is our first City Council Workshop of two. We will be back here in this room on June 24th. And we have a lengthy presentation. I'll apologize in advance, but a fun one nonetheless. So please bear with us as we dive into the material. As you noted, we have these folks presenting and folks available for questions as well. And there's a handful of our consultant team that are here in the audience tonight, as well as a couple on Zoom listening, and also available for questions. Tonight, we're going to focus on these areas. And again, this is the first of two. We'll talk about where we are in the project. We're going to spend a good chunk of our evening talking about the community feedback that we have received. In fact, you probably saw some of the boards that were developed during those discussions on the way in tonight. We're going to discuss five changes from the 2024 concept that you saw last May to today in the current design. We'll, we'll talk about some diagrams and then finish off with HRNA, who is our financial consulting team, to discuss funding options for the project. When we come back to you in about five weeks, we'll continue discussion on the funding options. If there's any follow-up items from tonight, we'll make note of that and come back to you with some responses and answers. And that will be the meeting where we show kind of the big unveil of updated visuals with some fun renderings to, to look at. Now, we'll also talk about constructability and a phasing plan, as well as the project timeline should the project proceed. Then beyond that, as we move into the fall and winter, there will be an opportunity to discuss these four items in greater detail with regards to parking, TOB, configuration, options of the lanes, procurement strategies for how to actually execute the project. And then if we do need to vacate this site for construction, what that business continuity plan would look like. So our, our hope is not to get too involved on these questions tonight because we want to save those conversations for later in the year. So just a little bit about where we've been, a quick orientation. I know not only the listening audience, but the council has seen this slide, you know, probably close to half a dozen times by now. This is an artist sketch from 1987, which shows a lot of the things that we are proposing as part of this program. This is Thousand Oaks Boulevard through the middle, but what you see here is a vision for a downtown Thousand Oaks. Now, what got constructed ultimately looked a little bit different from this, but there's a lot of elements that we were bringing back from this concept nearly 40 years ago. The downtown core master plan was the first official step into trying to create this downtown Thousand Oaks in 2018. But these are the goals that the council laid out. These are things you'd see in most successful downtowns. Be the place to go, entertainment choices, active pedestrian oriented uses, and a park wants strategy. This entire goal is to be the catalyst for more redevelopment up and down the Boulevard and to create the nucleus of a downtown. The area shown in orange here is the Civic Arts Plaza site, roughly 20 acres. It does not constitute a downtown in and all of itself. It's really meant to catalyze more reinvestment within this quarter mile stretch here, which is the smaller yellow circle, and beyond to that half mile radius, which is a larger yellow circle. The council will recall that back in December of this past year, nearly six months ago, you greenlit us to the tune of about $5 to $6 million to turn this from a concept and into design. And so from that action, we were able to hire RRM and Smith Group as the primes on this agreement to lead us in this last six months of design work. This is where we've been. I know there's a lot on this slide here, but I included just to illustrate, we're nearing the end of this initial design work. We're here in this kind of red area off to the right. We spent January and February validating the program and listening to community members. We then used March and April to ideate and come up with solutions to address those community desires that we heard about. And then in May, and then subsequently in June, we will be refining the program as we go ahead with these two workshops being part of that refinement process. And then where we go from here is the goal of these workshops is to provide the feedback on the program prior to that initial entitlement submittal through the city review and sequel process. So after this refine phase, we'll work through the city review process, resolve any outstanding issues, and then submit it for sequel evaluation in preparation for hearings next May and June of 2026. So some key dates coming around the corner. We're here tonight on the 20th of May. We'll be back in front of you again June 24th with the goal of just a couple of short weeks after that submitting our initial entitlement package. So we're now going to turn to the summaries of the community feedback before I hand the mic to Jonathan, which you'll see is each one of these boards that you saw as you walked in tonight, with a few circles highlighted showing the areas that we're going to highlight. Again, there's no way we could possibly summarize everything that's shown on these boards. We're going to try and pick some highlights to share with the group.
Council members, our first community session was focused on arts and entertainment. And it was, in fact, the largest attended community conversation of the entire PAC. It yielded significant input on how downtown could be leveraged to complement the existing theaters, improve activation and vibrancy, and enhance entertainment experiences for our community. A consistent activity that we use to kick off each participation or kickoff participation in each session was to ask attendees to share about a great downtown experience that they have had in relation to the specific topic at hand that evening. When asked about their favorite arts experiences in a downtown, these were some of the locations that were offered by the participants during that session. As we continued through the discussion that evening, we heard that the community is looking for places that are walkable, unique, and special, that people are looking for places to go which are accessible and would be supportive of arts and interactions with art. The group shared their collective appetite for diverse types of art in a downtown environment that people can experience, along with different vendors and food options. Food brings people together, and that experience is heightened when we compare it with art and other activities. The community is looking for variety, whether stationary public art that they may be able to interact with, attending special events and gallery showings, or listening to musicians or performers. The common theme that we heard throughout that evening was that the best advertisement for a place is to see it activated and energetic. We heard that the community wants to see and feel variety, that they want to experience this area in a way that can be fulfilling both literally through food and figuratively by uplifting the atmosphere and providing a sense of place. And here, I'll turn things over to our Director of Strategic Communications and Public Affairs Alexandra.
Good evening again, council. I'm here to cover the next two topics. And as I'm sure you can guess, our second most attended session was around landscape architecture and oak tree preservation. Obviously, a very important topic to all of us. How do we celebrate and preserve the oaks that are in good health and that we want to be part of the program? And how do we also create a program where people can enjoy them and be closer to them? There was a strong desire for an improved pedestrian experience throughout what we would call the downtown core. And this also helps better integrate the oaks into that experience so people can get closer to them and, and feel more connected to that natural landscape that we have already. We certainly want to celebrate those oaks responsibly and complement them thoughtfully, meaning we need to be really mindful of the uses around those oaks. Which ones are in great health? Which ones maybe need a little bit more space in the long term? Several are hundreds of years old, and so those are all factors that we're taking into consideration. But a very strong desire to interact with the oaks a little bit more than people do today. We have some of the best oaks in the city on this property. And so it's a key component of the overall design and integration. Another key topic, of course, is just the general landscaping outside of the oaks. And the design teams had presented these two op- or three options, I apologize, low water, colorful playful, and sculptural architectural, and which ones resonated the most? And of course, low water, number one. After the drought a couple of years ago, I think we all quickly learned that that was a step in the right direction and also aligns well with our overall city forestry mastery plan, as long as, as well as integrating the colorful and playful type plants that will bring a lot of life and vibrancy down to the eye level. Our next session was visitor experience and business mix. And the question here really was, how do you want to experience a downtown? What is a downtown Thousand Oaks? We saw the amazing list of cities that Jonathan shared, but what, what are those things that make that really unique outside of some of those arts uses? And one of those key questions, of course, as we contemplate housing as part of the program, a significant part of the program, what would make people want to live in a downtown Thousand Oaks? And we saw a lot of really incredible answers, as you can see here. A, a common thread throughout, though, is certainly walkability. That pedestrian space, the, the spaces where people can move around, the park wants concept, and, and to feel really physically connected to the whole area. A very strong desire for local. Nobody mentioned, you know, any chain restaurants, things like that to be part of the program. It was a really heavy emphasis throughout many of our sessions. These key themes would continue to come up. The importance of having local businesses, local stories, local engagement, and keeping things that people really feel connected to and really can build a community around. Again, that walkability, the, the community, as we just discussed, there's a lot of cars, very car centric. And so how do we create a space that people feel connected to? They feel like they want to walk around, and they feel like they can get to the things that they want or need, right? Whether that's the drinks before or after the show, restaurant uses, different things like that. People wanted to be able to really walk around and have that feeling of not being tied down to a car and still being able to access multiple experiences. And from there, I will hand it back to Akbar.
All right, I'll handle our last two. So the fourth session was on sustainability. There were, there was a small exercise that we had the participants do for us, and we showed them, walked them through the American Institute for Architecture Framework for Design Excellence. And they were able to cast a vote on which one of these 10 principles we should design for if we have to prioritize some over the others. With those results yielded was a preference for prioritizing energy and water efficiency with the triple bottom line in mind. So I do want to also point out, we did this not long after prolonged power outages. And so that may color some of the opinions on this chart. But nonetheless, there were a lot of comments in the open-ended questions around having charging available onsite in the extent of a extended power outage, incorporating more solar, and we have opportunities around the site to incorporate those things. You've heard this in both Jonathan and Alex's remark, and you see a constant theme here, but a desire for other options, notably, you know, walking, but just getting here too. A desire for dedicated bike lanes, bike parking, better crosswalks. Knowing that T.O. Boulevard still is going to serve as a key artery in our city, but how do we make that just a little bit more inviting for pedestrians? Inclusivity was a big topic of this session. We asked, how can the project set an example for resilience and sustainability for our city? What we got is, what we heard back was a, a desire to have people of different socioeconomic backgrounds either live or be patrons of this downtown, which meant that when we were looking at our retail strategy, we need to have options that conserve people, whether you're here to spend $5 or $200, that there's something for you to do with this downtown. Moving on to our final listening session on accessibility and disabled access. This, this one takeaway really influenced something in the program, which is why we highlighted it. So there's a preference for conveniently placed elevators versus switchbacks or ramps. This is probably one that's most literal. One of our designs up the grand staircase actually had a series of switchbacks. And upon posing this question, we were told, please don't do that. And that got us to reconsider. And so, in fact, in this most recent design, we've placed an elevator prominently in the program, one that's easy to find, most importantly, and is substantially larger than the other elevators that we have onsite. When we talk about accessibility, we're not just talking about ADA. As I mentioned a minute ago, we want to be inclusive economically as well. And that means having economic accessibility in diverse downtown. So again, there might be a version of your visit to downtown that, you know, maybe includes expensive tickets to something and an expensive restaurant visit to Mastro's across the street. And there might be another experience that is a lot more affordable. Maybe you're going to one of the events in our multi-use venue, which Jonathan will talk about later. And maybe you're getting street tacos at the public market. And so those are two different couples or two different people enjoying a night out in downtown at whatever price point they want. We did talk about ADA, of course, in our accessibility conversation. And there was a desire to go beyond the basics of ADA. ADA is our floor. If we program things from the beginning with a higher bar in mind, I think we can achieve that. What you're seeing on the screen here is, we, we included this because it reminded us of a story that was told during the session of a mother who had what used to be a child with disabilities, who's now a grown man with disabilities. And it, it was a pretty touching story about when, when he needs to be changed, that's kind of the end of the day for them. They must go home. So if we can incorporate some of these amenities in the program in a place where they can be directed to, we can be even more inclusive in the program. So overall, there were dozens and dozens of takeaways from these five sessions. You'll see nuggets of them throughout, not only this presentation, but on June 24th. But I'm going to boil it down to just these five. So the downtown will serve as the cultural hub of the city. Food, music, and art, that is our driver. If you have further questions on that during the questions and answer period, I, I would invite Rob York from York Consulting to, to speak on this topic. If you want to go buy a new pair of shoes or buy back-to-school clothes, the Oaks Mall and the Jan's Marketplace are likely to be better destinations for those things. Secondly, as Jonathan alluded to, there's a desire to diversify the definition of art within the city. And again, along the lines of inclusivity for other types of media styles and preference. Third, as Alex pointed out, mature oaks should be celebrated responsibly with safety for both the oak tree and the visitors in mind. Fourth, you're going to see some new additions to the program, one of which is a town square. And that became pretty evident early on in these conversations that that would be the home of some of these pop-up events and other community requests that we wouldn't be able to otherwise accommodate indoors. And then lastly, we, you know, we talked about what the future of Thousand Oaks Boulevard might be and improving bike lanes in the downtown. Speaking of walkability, that's probably the, the most prominent change in the, in the program that you might see is there was this Main Street that was introduced that I think the council is familiar, familiar with. And over and over again, we heard, make the eastern portion of Main Street closed to just pedestrians and leave the east or the western portion available for cars. And that's what you're going to see tonight. So we're going to go into five key changes from the 2024 concept. And again, the city council first saw this on May 7th of last year. And we're going to go through and just catalog the, the five key ones, starting with the proposed city hall location converted to hospitality. And we'll work down this list one by one. Jonathan will cover our second one. So this is the site plan the community and the city council may remember from May of 2024. It included a variety of mixed-use buildings on the west side parcel, as well as up against the Boulevard, including that public market on the northeast portion of the program. It included a proposed city hall right at the heart of the program at Dallas Drive and Main Street intersection. And then it included the adaptive reuse of this very building of the existing city hall. So we're going to walk through these five changes. The, the first one is regarding the proposed city hall, the adaptive reuse, the new location of the public market, the addition of a restaurant pad up near the Lakes Drive and TOB, and then the relocation of a portion of an underground stormwater box culvert. So when you take all those in combination, what you see is this revised site plan. There's some subtle differences here, but by and large, this resembles what you just saw a year ago. And we're going to walk through in more detail the rationale behind each of these decisions. A new hospitality use to the program, and while it says new, this is actually quite an old use, and we're going to touch on that in just a second. But in terms of the reasons why, it better accomplishes the program goals. And we looked at everything that the, the city council laid out in that 2018 vision. The use of hospitality at that prominent location at Dallas and, and Main Street better accomplishes everything that was described. It improves the economic viability of the retail onsite. Generally speaking, when you have hotel stays, they rely on the balance of the program. They're not necessarily cooking meals in their room. They're relying on dining out and things like that, making use of the full downtown as part of their experience. It is mentioned in our general plan as a land use goal. We'll talk about that in just a minute. And it places a revenue generating use, like I said, in a prominent position in the program. And then lastly, if the council has questions on this, of course Jonathan can speak to it. With the beautiful theaters that we have onsite, having a hospitality use right next door is a clear value add and will even make us a more attractive destination for future acts. I mentioned this is included in the general plan, Land Use Goal 13.5, talks about a boutique hotel and encouraging the development of such in the downtown core. This 1987 sketch, I kind of flash it on screen every time we talk about this program. We don't really go into a lot of detail, but here, I think it's really important. At the bottom of the screen, that big building that's kind of anchoring the site. At the bottom of the screen, that big building that's kind of anchoring the site with the big letter H on there, you can probably guess, H stands for hotel. In an interesting way, we're kind of coming back to this, you know, full circle nearly 40 years later and proposing that this use be reintroduced to the site. I'm now going to turn it all over to Jonathan to talk about the targeted reconstruction of the east wing of City Hall.
So as Akbar mentioned, part of our program has evolved over time and part of the program calls for reconfiguration of parts of the existing building while adding a new segment onto the east portion of our facility to relocate most of City Hall. This would improve wayfinding and navigation around our building and would also create a centralized public services counter to serve our residents. On this slide, the area shown in red on the left of your screen illustrates the existing areas of our building, which would require demolition. The area in teal on the right-hand side illustrates the elements which would be newly constructed to achieve the desired mix of programming and alignment of city services. In this design of the program, we are creating upward connectivity for arts, culture, and entertainment with the Cavlee Theater on the third level where it currently exists, the Sheer Forum located here where we are tonight on the second level, and a new multi-use event space on the ground floor. This flexible configuration space is a new opportunity to provide rehearsal space, showcase smaller, more intimate performances with adaptable seating, and host a variety of special events. I realize that there's a lot to take in with this, but I urge you to remain open and understand this is still a conceptual illustration. It doesn't necessarily reflect the exact final product that we'll bring before you at a future date. Here, we're providing a section of what this proposed building could look like. In this image, we're looking into the facility as if we've sliced off a piece and are looking directly into it from Thousand Oaks Boulevard. In the middle of the image, you'll see the existing Cavlee Theater. Imagine moving clockwise, we're going to see the Sheer Forum Theater located with Building E in front of it. Building E, though lightly modified, would remain usable for office space. However, the ground floor on the lower right-hand corner of this image, this is where we could include some sort of potential retail, a police department presence, and also a library outpost. As we continue that tour clockwise, the Sheer Forum Lobby is identified on the second floor. This is the same lobby as is presently shared with City Hall. From here, we move into the new construction parts of the facility as the multi-use event space is shown in the bottom center of the image. The public market creates an environment with a two-story high centralized gathering space surrounded by local food vendors on the ground floor and business and arts incubation spaces on the second floor. This is an area where people can grab a quick bite or a cup of coffee, and in doing so, they can also have the flexibility to walk around, giving them exposure to creative spaces where there's activity happening in a number of these incubation areas. Lastly, on the left, you'll see a new city hall structure. This new building, effectively a bar of a building, becomes the home for civic services. Condensed offices for city functions, including a city, a new city council chambers will be accessible from Level 3 and a centralized public services counter. The inclusion of a library outpost is derived from a recommendation in the 2023 Library Space Planning Report, which identified the Civic Arts Plaza as a potential location for a new branch library. This also fulfills an implementation goal as part of the updated general plan. While not necessarily intended to be a full-sized branch, the inclusion of a library outpost allows us the flexibility to provide additional services for residents and incorporate a greater import, a greater importance on outreach from our library team. These are just a couple of examples of areas in other cities where you have this inclusion of a literary area or library outpost, some sort of area where people can grab something to eat and grab a book and just enjoy their time. This is a conceptual rendering showing the third-floor terrace just upstairs. Imagine having parked in our existing parking structure, walking past the turnaround and arriving here with our new city hall building and centralized public services directly in front of us. The entrances to the Cavlee Theater in this image would be immediately to our right from this vantage point, and the Sheer Forum Theater on the second floor but over to the left. During many of the months of the year, this area would be leveraged heavily for use by theater patrons before, during, and potentially after performances. This creates another gathering area for smaller special events, including networking and mixers and even some specialized performances. This activated terrace patio provides a much-needed amenity for entry and exit of the theaters, but also for gathering during events. When the Cavlee Theater is sold out or very well-attended, space in the lobby is at a premium, and we often do not have enough space to adequately provide concession services to patrons in a comfortable setting. A flexible outdoor space such as this provides that opportunity. And this image may look a little daunting at first, but here we're looking down at the third-floor terrace from an aerial perspective. You see the Cavlee Theater identified at the bottom of your screen and the Sheer Forum off to the bottom left-hand side. The purple sections denote movement and circulation throughout the spaces in the program. We maintain connectivity from the ground level in the park all the way up to the third floor at the Cavlee Theater by way of the grand staircase as well as elevators. The vertical rectangle on the right-hand side is the new city hall building. The center of the image depicts the anticipated usage of the terrace level, where during the daytime, those areas marked in orange would likely be used for gathering spaces because they are nearest to the office areas. The area identified in green would be flexible for special events or gatherings, and the area in blue would most widely be used in the evenings to provide additional space for theatergoers. You'll see that we maintain movement throughout these spaces as indicated with the purple dotted arrows.
All right. Number three, the relocation of the public market. Of most of the concepts that we showed throughout the community conversations, this one garnered a lot of positive feedback, I think primarily because it promised to showcase a lot of the local businesses that we have here within the city. So just a little bit of rationale as to how we arrived at this proposal. We heard over and over again that there was a desire for an open central park-like setting during the community conversations. That building, as shown, is about 7,300 square feet from the previous rendering here. What we learned is that a public market, really to be economically viable, needs to be at least 11,000 square feet. And then the other challenge is that it was just difficult to service with multi, multiple tenants and no back-of-house. There's four sides that kind of need to be the front door to this building. So moving it inside actually gave us a service route to help service that variety of uses inside. Moving on to the town square and the restaurant pad, these two are sort of combined. You'll see a variety of different nuggets throughout this program. And without the public market in the middle of this program, it now creates this rather sizable plaza, a true town square that isn't square, as Nick Deitch often says. What it also affords us the option for is this restaurant up against Thousand Oaks Boulevard, something that our design team, who are the ones that aren't based in Ventura County, they took a trip to Tarantula Hill after a meeting and have been working here all day. And they, they since called it the Tarantula Hill effect. There's not a sign on Tarantula Hill that says Tarantula Hill. But as you all know, what do you see? You see people having a good time, hanging out with friends, and it almost beckons you in. And so in a similar sense, we wanted to introduce a, a restaurant opportunity here that was visually permeable, so you could see beyond it into the plaza space, but also acted as a, a beckoning call to motorists on the Boulevard. And then there's some other little pieces here that are, you saw on some of the community feedback, like the splash pad, this intentional decking around the, the oak trees elevated so that leaf litter can penetrate the wooden planks, and so it, it then permeates the soil. Lots of little details here that I won't go into too much info on. The amphitheater on what we call the east lawn today, this would come off of Main Street. There was a desire to incorporate some sort of garden area into the program, which we've done as kind of the main pathing into the amphitheater space, but that also has been accomplished. And without, here's just the showing without all the visual distractions across the program, but you can see that there's a variety of spaces and nooks and crannies that have been created by moving that public market inside. So as we mentioned a minute ago, we do achieve that central park feel by moving that public market inside. Having that restaurant out there frames the park along the northern boundary, but again, still being able to see through it onto the park area. And then lastly, we have a lot of flexibility for programming of special events like pop-ups and farmers markets. Another detail is we've actually designed this with the farmer's market in mind. In fact, we've spoken to both of the farmer's market operators that currently operate in the city. We've actually put the little canopies all up and down and measured how many we can fit on the site. And in fact, we're still tinkering with this, and we can actually find some more opportunities to incorporate more. One of the operators that we spoke to, they, they loved this concept because they have, they described one of their farmer's markets that are just along a linear street, and they described it as successful but boring. They loved this program because it had a sense of discovery. As you round the corner, there's yet another enclave to these farmer's market booths, which we thought was really interesting. There's also more opportunity as you were to veer south towards the amphitheater that we could probably make use of. This is kind of a health code compliance thing, but we want to make sure that we're thoughtful about it. There are rules around having restrooms publicly available with, if you're selling goods, whether they be produce or prepared goods, they have to be within 250 feet of a public restroom. And so we drew, we've drawn the lines and put the radius in to make sure that we're in compliance, but I just wanted to share this to show that these are things we are thinking about as we design this program. Lastly, I'll talk about the culvert realignment. So there is an underground stormwater box culvert that runs along the red line that you see on screen. This is the 2024 graphic, as you will recall. The buildings that we placed in the program in 2024, they dodged this underground box culvert. By realigning that 500 linear feet of the culvert, we are able to make highest and best economic use of those buildings that are up against the Boulevard in the top-left portion of the, of the screen. So you notice that those buildings change shape. Those are more efficient buildings. On top of that, we were able to incorporate some underground parking. So before the culvert realignment, here's what those buildings look like. If you look on the left half of the screen, those buildings don't incorporate a whole lot of units. We struggle to get the amount of units needed to sustain this program really economically. The parking, we really couldn't accommodate on that side of the road. You would have to find a way to provide that parking on the south side of Main Street. By realigning that culvert, we're actually able to yield roughly twice the number of units. Those buildings take on a more efficient shape. The cost per unit goes down, and that also means more affordable units as well. And we're able to actually incorporate parkings underground directly beneath those units, making those units a lot more desirable, more marketable. And now we'll go into some program diagrams. As Jonathan mentioned earlier, these are still in flux, but really what we wanted to communicate to the council and to the community tonight is that we are contemplating these uses and earmarking a space for them in the program. Where they exactly lie and the space that they are allocated will shift a bit between now and June 24th. But suffice it to say, these are things that we are definitely going to keep in the program to some degree. So the first floor has a lot going on, as Jonathan showed earlier. I'm kind of going to move from, from left to right here. This is the west side of the program. On the first floor, which is currently the home of our community development department, we would host things like the police outpost for patrol of the downtown. We have an earmark here for Hub 101, our friends at Cal Luthen for Business Incubator, something that came up several times during our community conversations. Retail space, Jonathan showed a couple of examples of what that could look like in combination with our library outpost. Moving to the east, we see a lobby space for our multi-use performance venue with support spaces for storage and things like that. Available restrooms in multiple locations, a gallery and art display in creation space. You'll see another version of this on the second floor, and then our food hall to anchor that, that bottom floor. The location of these restrooms are quite strategic because it has to service not only much of this outdoor program to the north, but also the amphitheater, if you think about a large gathering out there to the east. Now moving on to the second floor, we have city offices here in this building and then a variety of different uses over here. And that includes city offices, employee amenities over here, as well as the inclusion of an arts incubator area. So we talked about business incubation. We talked about arts incubation. And the food hall is, some would argue, culinary incubation, all happening under one roof. So this is where the city staff offices begin on this floor, and then we move up into the third-floor terrace here. As Jonathan showed that nighttime scene in the rendering earlier, one thing that becomes really exciting is this entire third-floor terrace now becomes loadable, programmable. It's on a single level from an access standpoint. It achieves those goals we talked about earlier. This is roughly 7,000 square feet of usable space that now becomes a blank canvas for us to, to program day and night. One thing I, I want to highlight though is this corner right here, which is the lobby to that, that city hall, as you come out of the parking structure and arrive past this, this point right here of the share and the Cavlee meet, you arrive here and oftentimes the city staff, we, we kind of joke, you'll find lost people right there, right where the red dot is. Our goal is to improve service delivery and, and make the wayfinding challenges of this site obsolete a thing of the past. So from this vantage point, it's clear within vision here that this is where you need to go. When we show this in 3D view in a few weeks, you'll see that prominent corner calling people to the front door of City Hall. And also, as Jonathan mentioned, this third floor would house our, our council chambers, smaller format, less theatrical, but probably right-sized for, for our needs. That then frees up other opportunities for this very room on Monday and Tuesday nights. As you move into the fourth floor, this houses our city offices. Of course, the council chambers is open to a two-story volume, and then the same bar repeats for that final floor. All right, and now I'm going to invite up Amitab Barthakar with HRNA Consultants. He is going to walk us through the different financial options available for the city in accomplishing this program. I do want to point out, as, as Amitab is going through these options, these are, he's going to explore all the options available to the city, not necessarily that these are the recommendations, but these are the options available to us. And so Amitab, please take it away. You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I know this is late and not the best headspace for anyone to talk about financial stuff, but I'll try to keep it moving and keep it pretty high-level, but please feel free to stop me if there is anything that kind of strikes as a question or is not very clear. Again, my name is Amitab Barthakar. I'm a partner with HRNA Advisors. We're the city's lead financial consultant on this project. We're working with a larger team supporting us, including Fullerton Consulting, Sperry Capital, Durham, Altus, Zero Envy, Land Economics, et cetera, who bring different specializations to the project from procurement to costs to energy efficiency to, you know, performing arts economics, et cetera. And our team has been working collaboratively with finance and with Jamie Boscarino and the design team led by Akbar with RRM and Smith Group. We, we talk every week, and we were kind of working in real-time in unison. Our firm, HRNA, is actually a real estate and economic development consulting firm or a national firm. We work on a lot of large public-private projects, as well as mixed-use development projects, including, you know, the Hollywood Park and SoFi redevelopment, the Ferry Building in, in San Francisco, Pike Place Market in Seattle, and large mixed-use projects like the Hudson Yards in, in New York. So very excited to work on this project, which is, you know, we were brought in at the right time as the project is taking shape. So today, we're going to give you an update on how the sources of funding for this project are beginning are beginning to shape up, including sources that we are sort of most certain about, that we know about, sources that we may be sort of speculative, speculating about that could be a source in the future, and how does that kind of, what, what is the magnitude of those types of sources? And then finally, as Agbar mentioned, talk about other tools in our toolbox, if there is a gap to close, that you may deploy if you wish so, and they could generate sort of additional funding for it, but they come at a cost. It could be a political cost or it could be a financial cost, right? So we, we want to put everything on the table so as the project is going forward, we know what's, what's at play and, and how much can we afford. The project costs are still being developed, but in big picture terms, the sources of revenue are expected to remain fairly constant. So, you know, both will have to come together at some point. So this first slide is presenting sources of revenue that are really known and have a fairly moderate to high level of certainty. The city has about $45 million in cash in hand. The real estate comprised of the mixed-use parcel as well as other real estate that the city owns at the Hillcrest site combined could generate about 25 to 30 million dollars if they were to be disposed. We have the hotel parcel, which we think is a really accretive use in the program as a NA in the land value because we think the hotel may need some incentives. While it's a really good complementary use and can really help catalyze the other elements of the project, we are being conservative and assuming that, you know, it may not generate a significant land value. So, so we're not really including that parcel as part of the land value program. Overall, you know, the known pieces of revenue and revenue that can be generated in the near term add up to about 70 to 80 million dollars, 71 to 77 million dollars, as you see on this slide. Next, we looked at sources that could be available at the project level. Some of these sources are going to be one-time revenues while others are going to be ongoing revenues. For ease of comparison, we're just showing the ongoing revenues in terms of their capitalized value. So for one-time revenues, we looked at naming rights, other state and federal grants, grant opportunities, which are competitive, as well as sort of other city resources, particularly the PEG funds that are available to the city franchise fees. Overall, those one-time revenues add up to about nine to 11 million dollars in terms of a range. And they have sort of moderate, in some cases, the PEG revenues are a pretty high level of certainty. The others may have moderate level of certainty, but also have a very different timing profile. The grants may be an ongoing thing, naming rights may be an ongoing thing. You may not all get it when you want on day one. So we're, we're kind of cognizant of that a little bit. And the second bucket here is ongoing revenues that may be available after the project is complete. Lot of the program elements that Agbar showed on the re-adaptive reuse of the city hall, which include the incubator, the public market, the food hall, some of the retail spaces, they're all going to generate rent. And, you know, some of them modest rents, some of them, you know, higher rents. Overall, they could generate about seven to 10 million dollars, seven to nine million dollars in capitalized value. In addition, there's, there could be additional revenues coming out of parking. The parking consultants are still kind of honing in on that, so that's a TBD, but that could be an additional source of revenue that comes out of the project. Just keep in mind that those revenues are only going to be available after the project is complete. So if we add up those two or three buckets of sources, you know, cash, the real estate potential, the one-time funding sources, as well as the capitalized value of the, some of the ongoing funding sources, we get to a total of, you know, 87 to 97 million dollars, close to a, you know, 90 to 100, let's say, if you round it, round it up. And that's, I would say, these are revenue sources with a fair degree of certainty. They are in your toolbox already. They're part of the program. It's a question of timing, what's available first, what's available later. And it's a, and we, we just need to line that up with phasing. So next, we started looking at other project level sources, i.e. what are the tax revenues that are going to be generated out of the project? Because currently the project is, it's a public use, it doesn't generate any taxes. So any new development, private development that comes on there are going to generate taxes, and that's going to be a new revenue source to the city, particularly looking at property tax, sales tax and, and hotel taxes, TOT. We also included the Hillcrest site as an option here if the Hillcrest site was to be redeveloped as a mixed-use residential project, so primarily property taxes coming out of it. But overall, if you look at, at build-out, all of these components generate about 1.7 million dollars in tax revenues. Out of that, almost a million dollars are coming out of the hotel taxes. So that is the big driver in sort of tax revenues coming out of that project. And in capitalized value terms, that 1.7 million translates to about 34, 35 million dollars. However, we are, we're looking at it sort of from another lens. We, again, kind of cross out the hotel, that because the hotel may need an incentive, maybe we don't get all the TOT. The TOT may need to go towards incentivizing and attracting the right kind of project out here at the right time and making it happen early. So, you know, we're being conservative and say that, let's say you don't receive the TOT, and if you were to dispose the Hillcrest site to its current users, the CRPD, and they continue to use it as a public use, maybe you don't get property taxes. That doesn't have a huge dent on this, but the hotel does. So overall, that 1.7 million reduces to about half a million dollars. So it's a range. It's from half a million to 1.7. In capitalized value terms, that that's about 10 million dollars. So it's 10 to 30 million dollars is the range that we're talking about in terms of project level taxes coming out of the project. So next we said, okay, we looked at known revenues. We looked at some very project-specific revenues. We looked at fiscal impacts of the project. Now let's look outside of the project, at citywide sources and other sources that may be generated by creating a new financing district or other tools like that, right? That includes, you know, using our general fund to issue more debt and borrow money to pay for it, then pay it back over time with general fund sources. We looked at tax increment financing, which is like TIF. That's like the old redevelopment tool that we used to use, but there is a new tax increment tool that's available through new state legislation, which is not as robust as the old RDA tool, but still offers a significant opportunity. I'll talk a little bit more about that, what, what, what the differences are. You know, the city could always consider new taxes to generate a new source of revenue, like, which has to go to the voters, additional sales tax or property tax addition. And last but not the least, a new assessment district, which assesses property owners, whether just at the project or outside the project in a larger district through a CFD or a Melrose District to pay for some of the public infrastructure. So, you know, I'll quickly touch on each of those topics like I, like I already said. General fund revenue is essentially, can be used to issue general fund-backed bonds. You borrow with those, with your general fund resources. The big question is, you need a general fund cash flow to pay back those bonds. So I think that is the critical, critical thing to remember there. Tax increment financing is, you have to set up a new district, then you set the base property tax and the incremental property taxes goes towards the fund, and those funds are used to issue debt and pay, pay that debt back. The new tool, enhanced infrastructure financing districts or EIFDs or climate resilience districts allowed by the state, allow for TIF, but there are some restrictions. But the key thing here is that these are not new taxes. These are just using our, our existing resources to either ring fence existing resources or, you know, create new debt capacity out of existing resources. The next three buckets are, you know, new taxes. I don't need to tell you very much about sort of how new taxes work. It requires voter approval, but they create a new source of revenue. Same with community facilities districts and Melrose. Beyond the certain number of landowners, you do require a vote of the landowners or a vote of the residents, but that's certainly a tool that's available to us. So we delved a little bit deeper into general fund-backed debt and the tax increment tool. So the city is projecting, and I think your finance director may have projected, presented the draft budget, the city is projecting around a million dollars in an operating surplus in the general fund right now. So let's say a million dollars is available to you as an operating surplus and you want to issue debt. That million dollars translates into about 15 million dollars of debt. That considers that you would have at least a million dollar surplus going forward for the time that you need to repay the debt. So, but the, the key here is that you need a certain amount of free cash flow to issue debt, and that is going to be critical. Right now, your city has only about a million dollars, but over time, that may increase. I think a big change is going to come when your pension obligations are restructured. You may end up having about five and a half to six million dollars in free cash flow, but that's not until 2034. Now, just to give you an example, if you had $5 million in free cash flow and want to issue debt against it, you could end up issuing about 60 million dollars in debt. But I think general fund debt is always a resource, but we need to make sure that there is enough free cash flow to pay it back, or we will need to reallocate funds from something else to pay back that debt. There's a second layer of complication, but that's sort of more at the city level, that your city has a debt policy that restricts you from not issuing more than 5% of your general fund budget as, you know, debt obligation. You definitely don't want to use all of that 5% for just one project because you, you will have other things you will have to borrow for. So that's, those are the two things to keep in mind. How much money is available and how does it actually stack up against 5% of your overall budget? Next is tax increment. I think, you know, since you know RDA, I don't want to go into the details of tax increment, but I will tell you what the key difference is in the new EIFD or CRD tools that are available to us. How is it different from RDA? I think the key difference is that there is no mandated tax increment participation by all taxing jurisdictions that are in an area. So if the city initiates a tax increment district under new laws, you will have to bring in other partners and negotiate with them what their participation is going to be, be it the county or the fire district or any other taxing jurisdiction who's out here, and then form that district. And all of this is kind of left to negotiations and nothing is mandated by the, by the state. What it doesn't require, doesn't require a finding of blight or anything like that. It also doesn't require a voter mandate to actually form these districts. However, voters could challenge it if they are against it. But formation and issuing of bonds doesn't require anything other than city ordinance and electeds from the various jurisdictions agreeing to it. We think it could be a very powerful tool in this area, but one of the challenges in tax increment, as you know, because it is about incremental taxes, it takes some time to ramp up revenues because development has to happen only then property taxes, new property taxes are generated. So it takes some time before you can actually issue bonds. We looked at a couple of scenarios. On a low scenario, we said, well, what if the city were to form a tax increment district and contribute about 50% of the increment to this tax increment district? And the high scenario, we said, well, what if the city formed the district and contributed 100% of the increment, but also brought in another taxing jurisdiction, like the county, could be another jurisdiction, and they contributed another 50%? And that's a significant range. Actually, if the county were to participate in that high scenario, you could get, you could issue almost 40 million dollars in debt by year six and paid back with tax increment money. If, this is almost three times than the low scenario where the city alone participates. So this could be a significant resource to consider in the future. So adding it all up, we have cash in hand, all of the one-time funding sources, ongoing funding sources, you know, in terms of rents and other things, tax increment. You add up, end up at about 100 to 130 million dollars. Now this is before talking about general fund-backed debt. General fund-backed debt could be on top of this, depending on how much you issue. So that's where we are in terms of understanding the full funding picture. A couple of key takeaways here that I would like to leave you with. We think that disposition of real estate at market value is a really key component of early funding, particularly, you know, sites that are readily available. The Hillcrest site could be a significant source of funding. Tax increment financing could be a very relevant source, especially if you can bring in other entities to participate in it. The city's debt policy and some limited operating surplus, general fund-backed debt may not be a immediate resource, but that picture is going to change in the next few years and it could be a resource for a future phase. And then, you know, the pension liabilities, as we said, restructuring in 2034 can add up some significant general fund debt capacity. Clearly, all of the money for the entire project may not be available in day one, so really lining up a phasing strategy for the project that lines up with the resources that you have is going to be a critical path. So I'm, I'm going to end there. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Why don't we take questions at the end? And thank you, Amitab. We'll wrap up our, our presentation. Just to remind the council, these are the items for our June 24th agenda. We will go into a deeper, kind of the second half of the funding strategy with HRNA on the 24th, and then we'll talk about those visuals, et cetera. You have three recommendations in front of you tonight. Really, the, the main one is to provide feedback on the program as you've seen it tonight, and then authorize the city manager to explore potential terms of disposition for 401, 403 Hillcrest to the Cano Recreation and Park District. On this topic, you saw it in your staff report. Jonathan, Jamie and I spoke at a recent CRPD board meeting. From subsequent discussions, there was clearly interest from their leadership in, in providing a pathway for acquisition for that site. So this recommendation is just authorizing us to explore that further with their general manager. And then lastly, find that this is exempt from CEQA. Before we head to Q and A, I do want to give an opportunity for the ad hoc committee to share their experience over the past few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Agbar. As everyone can see, that was a lot of information that really represented, excuse me, the last, I mean, for us, five months of work, which was for Al and myself, 10 meetings over that time span, most of them two-hour meetings with a phenomenal team. For HRNA, you know, sometimes financial models can be overwhelming at 10 o'clock at night. I got to admit, it was easier for me to do this at 2:00 in the afternoon, but we've had great guidance along the way, you know, even from RRM and Smith Group on the design side, the staff. We've, we've gotten to some points where we had challenges and everybody provided options through that. For myself, I'm a, I'm a real estate investor is my business outside of this. So a lot of times when we design things, that's the fun part, and usually you come up against cost and then you need to kind of figure out what your options are. And we hit a point where the costs started going beyond what we thought we were capable of, and the team came up with an alternative so quick, which I ended up thinking was a better outcome with the hotel scenario. I guess I'm really presenting this to my council members. The, the hotel wasn't part of the original plan, but after getting the presentation, it, it seemed like so obvious that we should have it. And the two parts that I really like about it, one, yes, it's an economic driver. It really helps bring viability to this project. As a, you know, parent, young, I don't know if I'm, I don't know what I'm considered now, right? Mid, mid, my wife and I was looking for stuff to do. Like a hotel is a vibe. It, it brings people to it. We were in Arizona not that long ago, and one place that we go to every time we're in the Phoenix area is the Global Ambassador. Didn't stay there, went upstairs to the rooftop bar. We had dinner there. There are so many reasons to come and experience a hotel beyond just staying there, but the aspect of staying, I think, is great. If I didn't live down the street, maybe that would be an option, but for people coming to the theater, I do think it's such a good compliment to not just the artists, but for the viewers. I mean, you can make now a trip out of that. So I just love how that came together. Al, I don't want to take too much of, of, you know, my view, but what I do want to say, this has been a pleasure to sit on this committee, more specifically, excuse me, specifically with Al. Al's been a financial advisor for decades now. He's provided a great balance between vision and what we should create and kind of the accountant financial mind behind that of what is possible. I just feel like we've got a lot done in a short amount of time, and I'm very excited about where this is headed. So anything I missed, add So anything I missed, add to it, paint the picture out.
Well, I, I would just say, Mikey, that you are considered young, would be the word that comes to mind in this particular city council. Anyway, yeah, it's really been a privilege to serve on this committee, I have to say. We are looking at the most consequential, far-reaching project that this city has ever embarked on, even beyond the original civic arts plaza that we're sitting in right now. And, you know, you've got to go into these things being flexible and being open-minded, because as you can see, this thing, this project is constantly changing, for the better, I think. There's certain things that have happened that I would have never predicted, and hey, I would have never, I've been around long enough when we were looking at the Boulevard specific plan, and we wanted to redevelop the entire Boulevard, three miles, and then we realized, wait a minute, we could, we could narrow that down a little bit. And that was a key mental change right there, to think, maybe we would better work with the property that we own. So that's what we've been doing. And some of the, we started off thinking we were going to build a brand-new city hall. Wouldn't that be great, you know? Good service for the public and everything. But the cost was a little too expensive, to be honest with you. And then we also thought to ourselves, well, if this is going to be a gathering spot, wouldn't it make more sense to put in a hotel? Wouldn't that be more of an attractive, you know, amenity for the city that people would want to come to? And I think so, yes. So that was a huge pivot. I mean, Mikey and I walked into one of the meetings with RRM and the Smith Group, and it was like noon, and there were thirty people in the room, all these brilliant people with these incredible ideas. I mean, I was like overwhelmed, wow. This is the kind of brain power we have behind this project, and they've just, they've just been incredible. So this pivot from a new city hall to a hotel, I think, has been critical. You know, reconstructing the front of the theaters is also critical. We can increase that by, to seven thousand square feet and finally program that area to be more than just a theater experience, to be a bigger, more exciting, friendly experience. There's all kind of things that, that we're looking at that are really going to make a difference. The public market, we decided that we could put that in the building, the existing building, and that freed up a lot of extra space for some more amenities. That's huge. I'm glad to see members of our colleagues from the CRPD, Canal Recovery Park District here today, because that 401, 403 Hillcrest property, I think we can work something out that's going to be beneficial between your agency and the city. And really happy that, that, that's moving along. And again, that's been a process that we've reevaluated and looked at, and I think we're heading in the right direction there. So, yeah, like I said, it's just got to keep an open mind with, with these things, and, and the changes that have happened, I think, have been really for the positive. And I thank Mikey for serving with, serving with me on it, and the staff for the incredible work that they've been doing. You know, this is, this is a huge project, and we want to get it right, and we're going to get it right. So I'm sure my other fellow council members have questions about what the heck's going on here? What are you guys doing? And I think, be happy to hear your input.
Thank you. One of two questions.
Where do you begin, right?
Where do we begin? We begin by thanking Akbar, Jonathan, Jamie, Justine, and many, many other staff members, as well as the ad hoc committee. What you've shown here represents a lot of work, and it shows, as well as our partners we've been working with. Really appreciate all this, and with that, I'll open it up for council questions.
Sure, I'll jump in.
Please.
Actually, I'll be honest, I'm feeling a little bit overwhelmed by the presentation. You've had four or five months to digest a lot of this. This has just sprung on us tonight, and if we could come up with a better way of doing this, I'd appreciate it. The, thank you for the work you've been doing on the, the committee, though. It's a good, a good amount of work, and it's an exciting program to see coming closer to something that actually will, will happen. Throughout the, when I was on the committee a few years ago, my main concern was to make sure we had some commercial viability to the project. And it looks like you have concentrated heavily on the commercial viability of the project. The idea of the hotel there instead of the city hall, that was always a concern of mine, that we were building a large municipal structure that wouldn't have any net, net, net to the project.
Do you like that idea, Bob?
I like, the hotel's fine.
Okay.
I like it. I'm not quite sure how the library thing works while we're looking at that, but...
Yeah, I'll have some questions about that as well.
I'm not sure how that ties in, but just from what I heard tonight, I'm not completely down on that idea. But part of what we were talking about in, in the whole project is a residential part that wasn't touched at all tonight. So I'd like a little more information about what residential uses are we still looking at here in terms of, I assume it's still going to be on the West Side property, part of a mixed-use type thing, I assume, but we didn't talk about that at all tonight. And I think the residential aspect of it is an important part of what we are trying to accomplish by bringing people to the Boulevard, as well as the commercial aspects of it. One, one, as I think Jonathan was going through some of the, the layering of the, of the city hall. I appreciate that we're going to have new council chambers and a lot of the city hall on, I would call, the east facet of the building. But there's, I saw other city hall offices still in the west facets of the building. I would, I'd be cautious to do that, because right now, that's part of the problem when people come and get lost wandering about, that we have offices sort of scattered throughout this structure. I'm not sure how you're going to approach that, if we can put them all in one location, or if we can keep them better, better marked somehow, so that people don't get lost as, Akbar was, was sort of joking about people coming here and standing there looking, wondering where to go. I'm, I'm not sure just having a split use of the buildings solves that issue. So those are my initial thoughts. Frankly, the financing side of it, little bit too much to take in tonight. Thank you for the presentation. However, there's a lot of different ideas there. But just in terms of the presentation of the, of the building, those are my initial thoughts. I say, I think it's a little overwhelming to be presented with so much information, and then hoping for, you know, cogent discussion.
Can I just say one thing real quick? You hit the nail right on the head, Bob. The residential is absolutely key to this project working, absolutely key. We need people living there. So, and that did get left out a little bit tonight, so hopefully, maybe we'll talk about that in a later meeting, or maybe the staff will talk about that this evening.
I'm planning to ask a couple of questions around that.
Okay.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
I'll just echo Bob's position that it was a little overwhelming, but I think my excitement for this project is kind of pushing me to just kind of retain what is, what makes me excited about this project overall. I really want to highlight the community engagement. That informed a lot of what we heard at the beginning of the presentation. I was able to make one. I had it in my mind that I was going to make all of them, and I was like, Jonathan, I'm going to be there. And then life happened, but I also feel that that spoke to the level, again, of how well that was executed, that first instance, where I felt the input of our community was really being captured, and that there was a, a really healthy listening happening and digesting, and then implementation that was on, on the horizon, and we got to see and hear a lot of that today. So I just want to really congratulate you all on how that, how well, how well that was executed, and we have the beautiful signs outside to even just kind of like live on through that, that lives on after that process. I want to echo the community's commitment and sentiment around local. I think that really will differentiate how this community gathering space lives over time and kind of takes on an energy of its own as our, as the heart of TO. And really excited to see the square that's not a square come to fruition, because I think I did hear at least some of the examples of locations that folks were really anchoring the best downtown experience, always had like a large park somewhere in, on its footprint. And I, and I agree about the, the, the tarantula effect. I love passing by there and seeing the hustle and bustle. Some, some days, I don't know where humans find the energy to do, do all that hustle and bustle into the evening hours, but I'm grateful that we have a space to house them. And another addition to that would be really, would be great to have. So I guess these are mostly just like comments of what, again, what excites me. I'm really intrigued by the library conversation. I think it's a concept that I've seen work before, and that, so I, when I travel, I will seek out the local, locally-owned coffee shops, and I visit the public libraries. Like, this is something that me and my son do regularly when we visit places. And, and as you, many of you may know, my family owns a bookstore, so we have like this affinity and this love for, for reading and, and spaces that invite you to do that more often. The residential use, I did make a note of that as well. This is, that was a huge, I think it's a huge thought for me, or a thought bubble I wish we would have kind of touched on a little bit more because of the unique kind of position we have of building residential on city land, and what that means as it relates to affordable housing and the percentages that we can set as part of the requirement for anyone that would like to, you know, take on that project. Overwhelming, but I think rightfully so, is a, a lot of work that's gone into this, obviously. I think I, the financing options, while I feel really strongly about the 401, 403 kind of like outcomes and the collaborative energy that was there with CRPD, I feel really comfortable with that. Everything else is, I feel like I'll be coming to Jamie and going like, what does this mean? How, like, I just, I feel like that breadth of knowledge is a, is a knowledge gap for me, and so just calling it out that I, I might need some more in-depth conversation around that, even if it's one-on-one.
Thank you. I'll echo my colleagues' comments about those of us who are not experts in real estate development or finance. There is a bit of a drinking-from-a-fire-hose quality to some of this, but in, in no way does that lessen my appreciation for the amount and quality of work that's been presented here. So thank you for, for that. Akbar, you and I had talked in a staff meeting, but I, just since we're providing inputs here, I'll do this in public as well. I'm, I'm hopeful that by changing to a hotel, that that doesn't lessen in any way the number of housing units that would be part of this overall project, particularly when it comes to affordable units. As you know, I'm an advocate for addressing the housing needs we actually have, and our greatest unmet need by far is in the affordable, various affordable categories. I'm also excited about the multimodal, I think is the term you used, access aspects of the presentation. Would love to hear more about that in detail, I guess, in our, in our next meeting. I'm particularly interested, given that we are and always have been a very car-centric place, what, what this center would do to get off that. You mentioned single parking is part of that. How other non-car forms of transportation would work to support this, would work to enhance this? I think that, that would be a very good aspect to highlight. Also, I'm very encouraged by what we heard with regard to disability or disabled access. I love, I love that you stated the term ADA as our floor. We, we do what federal law requires us to do, of course, but there is much more we can do there, and that's wholly consistent with multiple goals we have about, about everyone belonging here. So kudos on that. On the funding sources, very interesting presentation, love the flexibility, love, love the different options. Just a couple of comments on that, I'll touch on briefly. One is my sense, and this may be correct or not, is the, the, there were multiple references to the hotel piece of this maybe needing extra incentives to get done, and that the purchase price, or the sale, or whatever, really, really was negligible, so, so much so that it was marked as an NA. Since we're giving inputs here, my strong preference is, is to acknowledge this is a public-private partnership here. But I am a strong proponent of, to the, to the maximum extent possible, keeping public lands in public hands. So, so if it, if it's really not a net plus to have that, the property under the hotel be transferred to private hands, why do it? When there's a public benefit to hold on to land that will be much more valuable in the future, given the success of this project? The other, the other comment I'll make, just very briefly, about hotels, and we've talked about this before, is in that industry, there are all different tiers, and I would encourage us to think carefully about branding, as it were. It's not our job to decide if it's a Ritz Carlton, or a Motel Six, or something in between, whatever, not putting a value judgment on any of that. I am saying that we should be aware, as we move forward with this, that although we are a public agency, by doing this, by having this be a prominent part of the project, there is some branding aspect to that that ties that to our public identity, and I, I hope that we will exhibit the same degree of sensitivity to that as we have with other parts of this project. It is, there'll be a sign saying city hall somewhere, there'll be another sign with a big hotel logo on it, and in the public mind, those two things will be linked, and we need to be sensitive about that. I think that's all I have for questions. I'm going to ask staff to hold off on responding to these different questions, because we do have public comment, and I appreciate the public staying up so late, holding on. One more comment from Councilmember Engle, then we'll go to public comment, and then to staff.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other, one other aspect I did like about the presentation and, and some of the applications that you're doing to this project is the flexibility of some of the uses. The flexibility on the deck in front of the cavalry, I think, is going to be a key ingredient for really enlivening that space. The area out in front where we have the, kind of where the big brown lawn is now, that is going to be an area that is flexible use. And I think having that flexibility not only allows us to feature different, different uses in that area, but also gives us... uses in that area, but also gives us the ability in the future as tastes change, as needs change, to be able to address those needs in an area that hasn't been committed to a, a structure. So I think the flexibility aspects that you've built in, um, are, are attractive to me as far as being able to have that, uh, ability to adjust in the future, how, how we would like to use the space.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mayor Newman. Bob reminded me of something I didn't know would be appropriate for this session or for the next session related to programming because there's so much flexibility in a lot of these spaces and even more specifically the lower or the, uh, bottom level or ground floor level theater coming in. And I know Jonathan and I have talked some about this, um, having pathways for our community to also be programming at a high percentage, uh, that is like fits within, you know, whatever contracts and city programming that we have in play. Is that something we discuss in the next, or are we like light years away from those detailed conversations? That was a question. I guess it's not a comment. It's not a comment.
We will give staff an opportunity to respond to all these comments and questions. I do want to get to public comments.
It's top of mind. There you go.
But since we're all adding one more comment, I, I apologize. I'll add my one more. I neglected to get to it before. Um, this is just regarding the library, possible library portion of this. Uh, the presentation cited a few examples. I looked up the one you, uh, you gave in Berkeley, California. That particular one is privately owned. Um, I don't, I don't see a public component of that one at all. I don't think that's a showstopper, but it's, it's essentially a bookstore that has a wine bar and a public meeting space, but, but it's not a library as any of us would think of it. Um, I would encourage us to think about ways that we could meld cafes, meeting spaces, that sort of thing with public libraries, which I have a bias toward. And with that, we go finally to public comment. We have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, speakers in person and one remote. So we'll, we'll go through our three, our lists of three for the in-person speakers, beginning with Mr. William Maple, followed by Lena Dion Ingles and then Jim Friedel. Mr. Maple, good evening and thank you for your patience.
Good evening. William Maple, Newbury Park. Members of the council, Mayor Newman. As a local resident, I encourage you to endorse the authorization of city manager powers to explore the terms of the disposition of the original landmark civic center. Buildings and surrounding property with CRPD. I believe prior and current use of both Hillcrest buildings to serve the park and cultural needs of the community have been a true blessing for the Canejo residents. Continuing to use the site for public use honors the 1969 Jants Family Land Gift, specified for public use. As Mayor Newman stated, public lands in public hands. During your terms discussion, please consider the old city hall is a landmark. It was designated in 1997 by the Cultural Heritage Board to preserve our history and protect the unique aesthetic and natural land use of the site. They kept the land open, 70% of it, so that by parking on the roof, that's part of the, um, why it was selected. Someone representing the Cultural Heritage Board and Jants Family should be present in these discussions. Across the street, dense residential is planned at the Oaks Mall. Keeping natural landscape next door and possibly developing park opportunities would help offset this planned density. Thank you.
Thank you. We move next to Lena Dion Ingles, followed by Jim Friedel and Danielle Borja.
Good evening. Pardon my reading glasses. I'm past, up past my bedtime. Um, good evening, council members. My name is Lena Dion Ingles. I'm a U.S. Air Force veteran. I'm a mother and the president of a local all-women's networking group. I'm also a small business owner. I recently opened up Joy Lab Ceramics, a community pottery studio here in our city. I'm here tonight as a proud entrepreneur and community member to advocate for something I deeply believe in, greater support and inclusion for the arts and the creative economy in our city. A thriving creative economy isn't just a nice to have, it's a powerful driver of progress for our community. Creative, creativity fuels economic growth, tourism, innovation, community identity. In fact, arts and culture contributed to 1.1 trillion to the U.S. economy in 2022, supporting 5.2 million jobs. Communities that invest in arts and culture see tangible benefits to increased tourism, local revenue, along with stronger sense of shared identity. When we support the creative sector, we're investing in a brighter, more connected future with, for everyone. As exciting as this creative boom can be, solo entrepreneurs like myself face real challenges in trying to be a part of it. Time is one big challenge. I wear many hats, artist, instructor, marketer, accountant, mom. There are so many, only so many hours in the day, it's hard to find time to navigate city programs or lengthy committees when you're also running a business single-handedly. High costs are another major hurdle. Affordable spaces hard to come by for artists. I currently pay $1,700 a month for 500 square feet of studio space, a huge expense for a small arts business. These constraints make it difficult to grow and to offer more creative services to the community. I know many other local creatives and makers that are in the same boat, passionate about what they do, but stretched thin on time and resources. Despite these challenges, I have a vision for what could be. I dream of helping create a larger inclusive community art space, a kind of third space for adults to gather, create, play and connect. Imagine a welcomes, welcoming studio where after work, people can drop in for a pottery class or a daytime dance party. I'll dig it. Where neighbors can collaborate on art projects and where creativity and playfulness are embraced at any age. This would be more than just an art studio. It would be a community living room for creativity, a, a place to spark joy, human connection and innovation. It also pains me to see so many commercial storefronts in and buildings sitting vacant for years in this city. Every empty storefront is a missed opportunity. What if we filled some of those empty spaces with art and creativity and other spaces, uh, in other places? This isn't just a dream, it's happening. For example, in New York, an innovative trans, an initiative transformed empty shops into temporary art galleries to support local artists. I truly believe we can find creative collaboration. And I'll wrap that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Jim Friedel, followed by Danielle Borja and Al Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor Newman, council members, city manager Powers, um, city attorney he/her. Good to see you, Patrick. I have four of my board members here, Doug Nichols, Vice Chair Cusworth, Directors Huffer and Narosco. And I think, I think we're all here because we care deeply about the city, our relationship with the city and the council, and the future of both the downtown, this place, as well as Hillcrest Center. So my compliments to the committee and staff for your work and to the whole council for continuing the work to implementing the vision of a compelling, vibrant, energized, social, civic and cultural place, a place that Dr. Raymond Olson spoke of many, many years ago. So the city and CRPD have been partners in serving the public for over 60 years. Enduring examples of our partnerships include COSCA and the collective 15,000 acres of open space we enjoy, the Teen Center, the Global Adult Community Center, and of course, Hillcrest Center. The city and CRPD have done great work together and that work is ongoing, always. So while the city is thoughtfully designing and planning the downtown area to meet the community's needs for the next 100 years, CRPD has been looking at the future, um, housing projections, location of housing, as well as where park facilities are and where the needs will be in the future. And it's no secret that Jants Marketplace and Oaks Mall may one day add housing to their properties. And in order to serve those new residents, as well as our current residents, the existing 50,000 square foot of buildings and the oak-studded hillside surrounding Hillcrest Center may be just the opportunity to add parkland, which will be needed in that area in the future. So with all the other big decisions council will have to make involving the downtown campus, it is very gratifying and greatly appreciated that the staff recommendation includes the opportunity for our two organizations to discuss potential disposition of the city-owned 401, 403 Hillcrest. And as the park district's GM, it's really a privilege and honor to work with the CRPD board and staff and on their behalf, get to work with the council and its staff to continuously strive to keep and to make Thousand Oaks a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the council, I want to thank you, Jim, for coming in and, and the CRPD board and staff for being a part of this. Thank you. We move next to Danielle Borja, followed by Al Lowe and Sheri Solomon. Good evening, Ms. Borja.
Good evening, Mayor Newman and City Council. Danielle Borja, President/CEO of the Greater Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here on behalf of the board this evening to express our continued support for the downtown project and really appreciate the thoughtful refinements that are being brought forward for discussion this evening. Our chamber and board staff leadership have been engaged in all the community conversations, spanning from business mix and landscape architecture to sustainability and arts and culture. Well-attended, well-run and very interactive. As we work to create a hub for cultural arts, we certainly support repurposing the prime location as a hotel use, which we feel aligns with the long-term economic goals and enhances the visitor-serving experiences in the downtown corridor. The East Wing being strategically reconfigured to house city administration functions while also incorporating relocated public market will ensure that both civic and commercial needs are both being met. Bringing the public market indoors will enable expanded footprint and the inclusion of essential back-in-house facilities to support our food and beverage options. Since everyone's weighing in on the library, I will just say that I love the concept. Um, it's almost like a public partnership Barnes &amp; Noble. I can imagine having a cup of coffee and letting my kids explore and read and hang out in beanbag chairs. And it also speaks to the economic diversity that Akbar mentioned, um, being able to have things that families can enjoy and single people can enjoy, whether it's a splash pad or a cup of coffee while their kids are checking out library books. The standalone restaurant will really provide visible activation along Teal Boulevard. We'd certainly like to see that still be an independent restaurant use. Um, and I think the, the market square and really opening that up and providing the ability and flexibility, we don't even know what it's going to look like in six years, what kind of programming we're going to want to put on that space. And so I love the ability to host farmers markets and all kinds of different community activations that we see fit. The Colbert realignment, um, is a critical infrastructure investment to support the necessary housing along Teal Boulevard. Um, it's one of those unsexy dollars signs, um, but, um, really important to actually fix that and resolve it rather than build around it. And we feel like these updates really reflect a plan that's responsive to the community input received to date, um, economic viability and designed to create a vibrant, inclusive and active downtown corridor. We thank you for your leadership and continued commitment to making this downtown a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Al Lowe, followed by Sheri Solomon.
Thank you very much. This is Olson Nikki Richardson, who I think many of you know. She's Associate Director of TO Arts. My name is Al Lowe and I am the current Chair of TO Arts. I would like to state for the record that TO Arts Board is very much in favor of the downtown redevelopment. But why? To start, the two current theaters are the anchors of this downtown development, redevelopment. Last year, there were about 280 performances presented in our theaters. Over 155,000 people attended the performances here and almost 7,000 kids representing 59 schools attended the theater, many for the first time. As such, we envision the redevelopment around the theaters as an opportunity to enhance even more the theater experience and make the area around the theaters a place where the public can come to enjoy the arts, but not just the live performances, but also the visual arts and the multipurpose spaces for community involvement. We want this redevelopment to expand the art presence in our city and to continue to make this a place where the arts can thrive for all. We are so proud of our two theaters, but we lack the infrastructure to complement and support the theaters as we grow. We need more food and beverage establishments adjacent to the theaters that will support the theatergoers, not only before the performances, but after. Right now, all the patrons just go home. If you have been to our performances, you saw that we need to enlarge the capacity of our concessions, perhaps expanding them to the outside of the theaters to serve patrons before, during and after the performances. We need to possibly relocate the ticket office so that people walking from the parking structure can walk directly to the ticket windows rather than walking past the theaters to get to will call. We need more signage, such as an electronic billboard that will advertise to the over 300,000 cars that pass by our theaters every day on Highway 101. We also need a designated transportation hub where taxis, Uber, or buses can unload and load passengers easily and safely. And we need a smaller outdoor amphitheater for lower cost to performers. Lastly, I want to remind the council that around 1990, Thousand Oaks faced a similar landmark decision that was whether to build a performing arts theater for this community. And there wasn't just a little opposition to it. The community members and civic leaders that were in favor of it had to really fight and help raise funds for this building that we are meeting in tonight. The hard decision was made to build these theaters and history has proven that that hard decision was the right decision. We now need to build on that decision made 35 years ago because the community needs to grow, evolve and serve the citizens of this community because the arts are something that every individual can enjoy, no matter their age, political preference, race or gender. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. And our final in-person speaker is Sheri Solomon, and I apologize if I'm butchering your last name.
You did a great job with my last name, Sheri Solomon. I'd like to introduce myself. And I was invited here, um, to give my feedback on your project as a Cal Lutheran Public Administration graduate student. Um, just to tell you a little bit more about me, um, I live in Calabasas. Um, I work, I've worked in real estate for 25 years. I'm a mom. I have an 11 and 12-year-old. And last but not least, I'm a veteran. So with my feedback, I have just a few things that I'd like to, they're a little all over the place and we're all tired, so I'll just get to it. Number one, um, the structure of your plan, I did not see a designated ride share area, which I think is very important and responsible, um, for going to have alcohol and events. We just want to make sure that we have, um, a ride share area that's separate off from the traffic of parking. Number two, um, in regards to the, um, housing aspect, I'd love to see a, um, interest list starting now, as soon as possible, of the residents who would like to, um, occupy the, um, the apartments and the, and the housing that is going to go into play. Um, I think that's very important so that you could, um, see the demographic and the affordability factor of the, um, potential residents. Number three, I'd like to see a, um, probably propose a partnership with our businesses, especially, um, the heavy hitters like Amgen as well as Cal Lutheran with the housing project and see if they have any interest in, uh, corporate housing or faculty housing, uh, staff housing, some sort of mechanism that, uh, would benefit the city, saying that we're partnering with businesses, we're partnering with organizations. You probably already have this in your plan. But it also will help, um, those organizations like Cal Lutheran because this project is so big, it will attract students, it will attract quality faculty, um, and it will attract staff. So if they could put this into play, um, in a significant way, it would benefit, uh, both parties. And lastly, um, I didn't see a plan for security, uh, around the perimeters of, um, of the project. And so what I'm looking at with security is I'm going to give you all an example of Target. Target has the big red balls in front of their store. Sorry, can I continue?
Uh, briefly, please.
But my point is those, those red balls are security barriers, so cars can't ram their car. cars into the store. And we would need some sort of security, beautiful, like, security features so that cars can't just run into the crowd, and we all can stay safe. And that is my input from Cal Lutheran.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming in. We do have one more speaker remotely. It's Kyle Robach. Kyle, thank you very much for your patience, for hanging in there. Go ahead and unmute yourself, and go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff. Forgive my informality this evening. Didn't intend to be there tonight. And wanted to just start by saying that I applaud the staff's approach to making this a community-driven conversation. And so I want to touch base on three things. One is my perspective based on those. Two, my takeaways. And three, a really simple but bold request of you, City Councils, as you move forward tonight and at the next workshop. First, perspective. I am the Vice Chair of TO Arts, although tonight I'm speaking as myself, not on behalf of the Board, but certainly have a perspective from a lot of the arts communities that exist here already, the nonprofits, the stakeholders, the folks that are the artists that live and work and create here. Two is I work professionally in the arts. I work in entertainment and television specifically. And three, have had the benefit of being a part of several of smaller group conversations related to this project specifically as it relates to the arts. And so I've heard people's perspectives through the lens of what does this project mean for me, somebody who lives here and might one day benefit from this project. And so with that said, some of the takeaways are, we have a burgeoning artist generation that is waiting to capitalize on its potential, that is waiting for an opportunity to continue to create, waiting for accessible ways to do that. In this case, I mostly mean financially. I mean, people who at the moment can't afford space, can't find space, and therefore go elsewhere, which leads me to my next takeaway. We have creative leakage from this area. People are going to other cities to create. One of my colleagues who I've grown up with, who lives basically here in this region, is about to open an incredible studio in Pasadena because he doesn't have a space to do so here. So this is an opportunity for us to bring that back home. And finally, the arts means so much more than the performing arts. The arts means music, it means fine arts, it means visual arts, and it means large-scale murals, it means culinary arts. Which leads me to my request of you all, which is to think boldly as you make these decisions. So I think sometimes we appropriately have a tendency to play it safe and take the middle of the road. This is a big project and requires big thinking and requires taking big swings. Think like someone who is under the age of 40, is a muralist, is a ceramicist, and just wants to get their feet underneath them. How is this project going to benefit them? And with that, I'll end it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we go to staff, just following up on a comment from the CRPD contingent, I do want to note that we've mostly focused... There are three recommendations in this study session. Most of the focus so far has been on the first one, which is public and Council input back to staff on this. But there is a second one, and it's very important as well, which is, quote, "authorize city manager to explore potential terms of disposition of 401, 403 Hillcrest with CRPD." So just wanted to note that that's an important component here. And with that, I'll turn it back to staff for any follow-up comments.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just start off with a few general comments. There's about 10,000 details in this very slide alone. I just didn't have the luxury of going into. And I'll, as I did a couple hours ago, just apologize in advance. There's a lot of information that we tried to get across in a relatively short amount of time. But really, what we wanted to illustrate is the level of depth that this team went into in every detail of this program. As Councilmember Adam alluded to at that meeting we had a couple months ago, there is tremendous horsepower on this team that put a lot of thought into everything that you saw tonight, and more so what you'll see on June 24th. With regards to the council members that are not on the ad hoc committee, clearly, we had to have a public forum to discuss the details of this first before we could engage one-on-one on the details of the program. So after this discussion, we'll be holding one-on-one sessions with each of you to bring the entire Council up to speed in preparation for June 24th. I'm going to walk through the list, and there's going to be a couple things that I will kind of put a pin in and allow my colleagues to address after I'm done speaking, but we'll move right down it. Regarding the commercial viability of the retail here, there's a lot of intention with things like the hotel and the housing. I know we didn't talk a lot about the housing tonight, but rest assured, when we come back on June 24th, because we are preparing for an entitlement package in early July, you're going to see all the things that typically would go into that entitlement package. The number of units, where those units live relative to the different buildings on the slide that you see in front of you, the unit mix, and you're going to see all those details, which I know is probably a point of interest for the Council. I'm going to invite Rob Yorke up before I finish the rest of my comments, and just to talk about some of our thought process behind the economic viability of this program and the... Just the discussions we've had along the way to arrive at this point.
Good evening. Yes, so we've went through and just thought about generally the positioning of this project, what the opportunity is, and the important role that this project will serve as an example for the wider evolution of your downtown core. So early on, we decided that this was not going to be a spot for the generic retail, the, you know, the big box or the chain stores. You've got more than adequate space in Jan's Marketplace and at the Oaks. So this is really going to be more focused on local culture, embracing the performance uses, so lots of food and beverage, which follows the way people spend their time and money now. But as we have gone through this, you know, looking at the public space as a unique and important anchor, we're looking at ways to drive traffic. So you have these beautiful theater spaces, which are given, which are a unique asset. We're looking at the residential components. And one of the recent shifts, which are... It's really fundamental in some ways, but it just adds to the program. You're going to get nice, new city hall space, much more functional. But the centerpiece is now not a nine-to-five, you know, with the exception of Council nights, a nine-to-five use of a city hall, but a very active cultural, you know, food and beverage on the roof, a food and beverage at the street level with the hospitality component. So it really dramatically changes both the economics, but the desirability for other food and beverage operators in the market, the retail uses that will line the base of the new residential. And it's creating that really finely tuned, yet flexible over time, because whatever we envision today, retail will change. So we want to make sure that this thing is relevant and works as downtown evolves and as these spaces turn over with new operators. So it's really designed to work today, to be financially viable as it comes online, but serve a really important purpose for the entire community and help catalyze that broader downtown vision.
Thank you, Rob. I'm going to keep going through the rest of the comments here. Regarding the library, Jonathan's going to go into a little bit more detail on that. But, Mr. Mayor, as you pointed out, the lean is towards a public library and concert, and Jonathan will talk more in a second. Councilmember Angler, you talked about the concerns over wayfinding, splitting the city operation. A lot of thought went into that because we do not want to run into the same problem we have today. Rest assured that all the public-facing portions of our operation still reside in that easy-to-find, prominent corner on the third level. So while there might be offices in the other building, none of those would be used to service the public. They would simply be staff offices that then would reside there and make their way to the public counter when needed. More comments or more questions around the Surplus Lands Act and affordability component associated with that. Of course, this project or this property being a publicly surplus land would need to comply with the SLA. The question of, does the hotel lessen the number of housing units? The short answer is no. That hotel pad essentially replaces what was going to be the city hall pad. The number of housing units remains exactly as it was. We have, in fact, because of things like the culvert relocation, finding areas for additional parking, we were able to actually ratchet up the number of units that we create, both market rate and affordable, as part of this latest concept. Regarding the... Some of the comments, we heard from our public speakers, designated rideshare area, TO TV has up our revised site plan. The angled parking that's being considered up against the Boulevard, and I know we will have more discussions. I know it's hard to see. I'm going to zoom in and see if that works here. There we go. That did work. Excellent. We do have opportunities to introduce angled parking along the Boulevard. Our design team is looking at, could we designate those as rideshare pickup and drop-off? And we've actually consulted with rideshare providers. This is where they want to go because they want to come in and get out without really entering the heart of the program. And similarly, we want to avoid congestion in the heart of the program. So this looks like an ideal spot to actually earmark some of those spaces for that use. Regarding the questions around housing, we are continuing those conversations. However, we want to be mindful that this will be a public-private partnership, and there will be an opportune moment to engage in that conversation. But for now, I just want to stress that we are focusing on achieving a critical mass of housing and people for this program to be successful. The comment around security, this is one of those 10,000 details I did not go into, but rest assured, security has been paramount in this design, not only from protecting vehicles from pedestrians. We talked about the closure of East Main Street to PEDs only, and it was for one of those very reasons, not only to create walkability, but also to keep folks safe. And as we showed in one of the floor diagrams, there is a space earmarked for TOPD as a home base for their downtown patrol. With that, I'm going to turn it to Jonathan to talk a little bit more about this public library concept.
Thank you. As the question came up about the public library and the outpost of the library here in the downtown, what we showed you tonight is not intended to in any way be the specific detail that we're focused on. The two options of providers that we provided, one in Berkeley, one in Culver City, those were merely just to explain some of what could be that kind of concept, not necessarily focusing in that this is exactly what we're going to do. In fact, what we're trying to fit is really creating that vibe that is established in those types of places while also potentially finding an opportunity for a public-private partnership between a library outpost and a private business, and having some sort of symbiotic relationship between the two. And, you know, library services have evolved over the years. It's not all just going to a branch and picking up a book anymore. There's online services as well as outreach and engagement with the community. And an outpost here in the heart of our downtown really allows our library team the ability to be able to explore those options. So that is why the consideration of the library outpost was included in tonight's discussion. And then, Councilmember Gutierrez, I believe you mentioned the affordability for the community-facing aspects of the multi-use facility. You know, when we talk about different metrics that we track on a regular basis, the fact that we were active between the two theaters 314 days out of last year, that we welcomed over 155,000 people through the doors, that we did over 280 performances between the two venues. What that shows us is that we have this need that is still there for additional resource and additional space to be had. When we go through those numbers, what we don't always highlight, but maybe we should start to talk about more, is that approximately 70% of our business here at the venues is from local presenters and promoters and producers. So it's a great opportunity to further the resources that we have to make available to those groups and to still provide the activation that we need to really make this place shine and bring all of the people who we're trying to attract to this wonderful facility that we're trying to enhance.
Thanks, Jonathan. And lastly, we'll go to Ms. Bascarrino regarding the finance questions.
Thank you, Akbar. We were just intending tonight to provide a high-level overall overview of different funding options that the city has available for this project. I know, seeing all the pretty pictures is a lot of fun, and then getting into the finances can be a little boring and draining, and it's late at night. But we haven't talked about financing this project yet with this group at City Council, so we just wanted to just do a quick intro. Here's different options we have available. You know, what is certain, such as how much we have in cash on hand, and what are the other options that the city could take in order to fund the project?
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Are there additional questions of staff? Councilmember Adam?
No, I didn't have a question. I'd like to make a comment, though, if I may.
Please.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I just want us to remember about this whole thing, that there's a business aspect to this. We're making a business decision here, okay? Public benefit can only have so much public support, if you follow me. These theaters, for example, there's been times when the city had to step in to support them, okay? So that's just a couple of theaters. This is much bigger than that. This is going to be a huge economic hub, and it's going to take huge revenues to run it. So what I'm saying is that it's got to be self-supporting. And yes, we'll have residents that live there that will contribute to that. But we have to ask ourselves, as we look at these uses, we have to be very pragmatic and say, will this use support itself in the long run? Or is this something the city's going to have to step in and basically support? Because the city only has so much ability to do that. So we have to be... You know, in the very beginning of this, one of the people we were dealing with said to me, "Al, do you want..." And I've said this to Drew, "Do you want a campus, or do you want a downtown?" Think about that for a minute. We have a campus now. A downtown's a totally different situation. And in my opinion, downtowns don't get supported by cities. They support themselves. We cannot put the city in the position, five, 10 years from now, that all of a sudden, some of these uses that seem so, you know, nice and public benefit are now turning around and saying, "Oh, we need support from the city." We can't do that. I just can't tell you how important it is. And I'm not saying that some of these uses couldn't support themselves, but I think we've really got to look at it through that lens. You know, the word "economic viability" was mentioned here a couple of times tonight. That's key. This thing has got to be able to stand on its own two feet. And I just think that that is something we can't hide from when it comes to uses that are proposed to us. We had a use proposed for an art museum here. And, you know, they wanted $40 million to put it in, and it was just economically completely not viable. And sure enough, they went out on their own and it failed. So we can't get drawn into those kind of things that are going to pull this project down. And I... Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we can't look at the public benefit side of it, but the public can only support so much public benefit. Does that make any sense? No? Thanks, Bob.
Councilmember Angler.
I think all along, I've been saying that it needs to be commercially viable.
Commercially viable. Thank you. There's two good words that go together well.
I think the public benefit and commercially viable are not mutually exclusive.
No, I agree.
But I think, you know, we... But I think, you know, we've, as you mentioned, the theaters, thanks to our current management, is now in the black.
They are.
But that wasn't always the case.
Not always the case.
So I think the model that we now have of the theaters is one of a mixture of the public benefit and the commercial viability. And that's the target that we should go for, for this project that we're contemplating.
You're right, Bob. It's a balance. We just got to make sure it doesn't tip so far to one side that it leaves the city in the lurch.
Other comments? Councilmember Gutierrez? Mayor Protem Taylor? Not hearing any other comments, I again want to thank staff. How about a motion on this item? Mayor Protem Taylor?
I will move 11A, staff's recommendation.
One, two, and three.
One, two, and three.
Very good. Any further comments before we vote? Madam Clerk, please prepare us for a vote.
That motion passes 5-0.
Again, thanks to all on staff and to our partners in this. Final item tonight is announcements and upcoming issues. For that, we go to Mr. Powers.
Thanks. I'm going to sneak us in right before 11 o'clock, when we would have to take up an item on this to continue. So we'll be back here on the 10th of June. A couple special presentations that evening. We have some follow-up from the League of California City's City Leader Summit and the SCAG General Assembly, a public hearing on our lighting landscaping assessment district, our operating CIP budget hearing, and Department report regarding the Lax Residential Project, requested extension to the purchase and sale agreement for that residential entitlement. That is for the 10th of June, and at that point, it'll be, we'll be into the casual summer attire for all that celebrate.
Thank you. I look forward to that. And with that, I will adjourn to our next regular meeting on June 10th. Good night, Thousand Oaks.